For your time and patience, as well as your commitment to providing time and space to the Waimea Nalo Neighborhood Board and the community that serves. So we welcome everybody to our monthly meeting. This is our reconvening meeting. So it's going to be a little bit out of character than we might be used to, particularly as we set some of the functions of the Neighborhood Board's capacity and responsibilities. And so we ask for everyone's patience as things might be a little longer than expected on our end, but we will try to be as respectful of your time as possible. I'm Kimionakane, I'm the Chair Pro Tem until such as which we decide differently this evening. Have the privilege of facilitating this evening's meeting and looking forward to learning with you folks. As mentioned earlier, we're missing quite a bit of folks, both from our community partners list as well as our Neighborhood Board. So as they come in, we will make adjustments on the agenda to fit those needs. With that being said, we want to mahalo you folks again for joining us here on WebEx. Today is Monday, July 10, 2023. It is 7:05 PM. We'll call this meeting into order. For those of you that are joining us online, mahalo. For those of you that are joining us from Kapala Mahale, 925 Dillingham Boulevard, mahalo partner and the NCO for hosting that physical space. The purpose of the Neighborhood Board and the Neighborhood Board plan is to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. Very simple, in the ways that we engage, we want to be as respectful to each other as we can. For those that are online, utilizing the raise hand icon at the bottom to ensure that you're recognized by the chair and addressing your comments to the chair. We want to be conscious of time, so if we could minimize our time to three minutes unless otherwise specified. Keep your microphones muted unless you are speaking. And for those that are online, muting and unmuting is star six. We ask that everyone who does share this evening state their affiliation as well as their name, so that we can put that on record before you move into the comment or question of the night. You're also able to submit written testimony using the email associated with the contact information listed on the NCO website. Or you can send it to any one of us as Neighborhood Board members. We welcome you to do so. Lastly, our community and our board has established the use of aloha. The, excuse me, the acronym akahi modesty, lo kahi unification, olu olu pleasantries, to be humble and ahonui to be patient, used as a standard conduct for all of us in the way that we engage with each other. Note that the board may take action on any item that's on the agenda as required by state sunshine law. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless an agenda item is added. That requires two thirds vote, in this case, nine members of the 13 member board. We do not have nine members total sitting on this board, so that should not come up this evening until we fill them. And it's because these items could potentially be of reasonably major importance and have an impact on a significant number of persons. And case by case circumstances will decide those items. And lastly, the meeting is being recorded. If you choose not to put your video on, we respect that. And it will be utilized for sharing captured by our Olelo team as we move forward. So with that being said, those are the welcoming rules and the remarks. Do we have anyone that's going to offer us a pulle to get us started? Anybody who would like to offer pulle this evening? Partner, mahalo. Partner, you gotta unmute, call him my...
Sorry, mahalo Chair. Let us bar heads in prayer and for those of you who choose to do otherwise, please be respectful of others. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here for this, for this meeting of community leaders, community members and community advocates. Please allow the Holy Spirit to, to fill this space and, and allow us to, to project ideas, opinions and, and advocacy in the best and hu- and the best way and most hu- with the most humility to each other. Let us be respectful of each other's time and space and let us complete the agenda provided in front of us and then travel safely to wherever our final destinations may be. Amen.
Amen. Mahalo Partner for welcoming us into function this evening. Can you also follow up by calling the role? Members, when your name is called, please respond, eio, acknowledging your presence here. Mahalo.
Sure. Okay. Auntie Mabel? Okay. Lulu? Moyata?
Eio.
Ted? So he signed on. Ted, are you here?
He's there.
Eio. Thank you Ted. Kenani? Auntie Kapua?
Eio.
And Chair?
Eio.
Okay, thank you. We got four out of seven present.
Okay, members, that brings us to not having quorum this evening. So we just want to acknowledge that until quorum is established, items on the agenda cannot take place in regards to business. Our decisions cannot take place in regards to business until that becomes available. So we'll keep an eye on that and we'll continue to press forward. Mahalo. Do we have any kupuna that are here on the call this evening that would like to offer the community any mana'o, any kind of discussion, any of our kupuna online? This is a space that we have carved out to ensure that the voices of our kupuna continue to be captured and utilizing the technologies today that we continue to honor the voices of those that are, have lived longer than us and guide our ways. And so if anyone is here for that, this is that time.
I can share.
Mahalo.
Can we also make it our same as our olelo no eio, my share?
Please do. Yep. And then just for the record, please introduce yourself.
Okay. Kapua Maderos. I grew up here in Waimea Nalo and I live Haleopuni. I'm the representative for Haleopuni. And today I would like to share a a thought, some thoughts about an olelo no eio that I'm pretty sure we already had shared previously. But this is something that I found today and I think it's very fitting for us because it's our first meeting again that we think about these things as we carry out our business throughout the year. This olelo no eio is ikavamamua, ikavamahope. So literally translated as in the time before and in the time after or as before. Also after. And this olelo no eio reminds us that in order to know the future, that we need to look to the past. That learning from the past can guide our future. Wisdom of lessons learned in the past may be the most important things for adapting to future changes. As resilience, the capacity to adapt, to change and disturbance is our focus in this timeline. Change events can be either environmental or social or both. They can happen slowly, such as the spread of invasive species, plants as well as other species or the adoption of a different kind of cash economy. They can happen quickly, such as volcanic eruptions or outlawing the Hawaiian language in schools. After change events, the memory of a social ecological system can initiate times of growth, reorganization and to get it to revert back to previous conditions. Ecological memory includes biological processes that continue. So such as plants regrowing after fire or opai ulu returning to a once dried pond. Social memory comes from the knowledge, practices, values and worldviews of the people in the system. And in this system, it would be our kupuna as well as our maupuna and our makua. So all of us surviving in this havaii, our aina aloha, eio. So although the, this was written for the descendants of ka'u pulehua, but I thought it would, was also very fitting with a reflection of Waimea Nalo. All right, so mahalo.
Oh, yeah. Mahalo ikavamamua, ikavamahope. Mahalo nu Auntie Kapua. Thank you so much for sharing that. A very critical piece of information for all of us to reflect on and internalize. Mahalo. We're going to move on, members, to Honolulu Fire Department. See Captain Granato is here. Hello Captain, thank you so much for the report. I will send it out to the members following this, but please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. Again, my name is Captain Stephen Granato. Can you hear me okay?
Good to go.
Okay. Here's the July report, statistics for the month of June. We responded to one structure fire, two wildland brush fires, one nuisance fire, one cooking fire, 39 medical emergencies, zero motor vehicle collisions with a pedestrian, two other motor vehicle collisions, one ocean rescue and zero mountain rescues. The fire safety tip of the month has to do with grilling safety. Good tip for summertime. Always use barbecue grills outside, away from doors, windows, vents and other building openings. As you know, the carbon monoxide gases are not good to get in your house. It's the silent killer. You might not know it's, it's, it's in there, but definitely keep grills out of the houses. Keep children and pets at least three feet away from cooking areas. A light propane grill only with the cover open. If the flame on your propane grill goes out, turn the grill and gas off and wait at least five minutes before relighting. Be sure to periodically remove grease or fat buildup in the trays below your grill. So it does not ignite and cause chaos, which I've seen happen before. Do not store or use a grill on a porch or balcony. Again, the fumes can get in the house and that's very dangerous for people in the house. Always store your propane tanks outside of buildings or garages or remember to properly inspect propane tanks and fittings. If it looks like it's corroded, rusty and old, it might be time to just turn it in. You can always take those to the landfill. They have a special place to keep those. And that's about it for the safety tips. Does anyone have any questions?
Captain, thank you so much for the information and your service. Members, any questions for Honolulu Fire Department? I'm seeing none. Anyone from the public? All right, I'm seeing none. Captain, mahalo again for your service and for the information. We appreciate you folks. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, guys. Have a good night.
Aloha. All right, members, we're moving on Honolulu Police Department. I see Lieutenant Napoleon. Lieutenant, the time is yours. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, everybody. My name's Lieutenant Kevin Napoleon. Stats for July for the month of June. We had no motor vehicle thefts, no robberies, had three burglaries, 11 thefts, which include their wide variety of things from vehicle, bicycles, purse snatching, from a building, shoplifting, et cetera. And we had four unauthorized entries into motor vehicles.
All right, mahalo HPD for that report. Members, any questions for HPD? Okay, I'm seeing none. Anyone from the public? Okay, Lieutenant, I do have a question. It's more an inquiry than anything else. It, it, it's in regard to some of the parking that we've seen increasing in our tree lines on the beaches at Waimea Nalo Beach Park. Now, I know that there has been some permitted events that have resulted in parking along the area. But we also know that on a given day, you will find vehicles along that shoreline parked along the tree line. It's my understanding based on the park rules that those vehicles should not be there. Is that something that we can get HPD to do more outreach on and just inform and advise to help alleviate some of that overflow? And it's, it might be overflow from the overcrowding of the beaches too. I want to be conscious of that. But I feel like people need to be instructed and informed. Anything that HPD can offer in that regard?
We actually have increased the enforcement for that for the last three days. As we noticed it coming up, the beat officers have been making mention of it, so we are addressing it.
All right, great. And I do want to mahalo the community policing team. It was great to see them out at a recent event with us at Job Corps. We look forward to continuing to build a relationship of trust and integrity within the HPD community and our community. So mahalo for your service there.
Oh, thank you very much for participating and helping us with all the stuff that goes on out here.
Fantastic. All right, we're going to move on. Border Water Supply, Danny. Do we have Danny here? Hi Danny, welcome.
Hi, good evening. Hi, so message for the board tonight, July is smart irrigation month when the water, the altered water use typically increases with a very hot and dry summer and below normal rainfall. Let's all do our part to use less water. We can all help by assist, oh my gosh, we can all help and assist by installing a weather-based irrigation controller. This device uses local weather stations to adjust your irrigation system, operating times based on the plant's water needs. You can apply for a rebate from the Border Water for this item. You can also install a rain barrel. You don't actually need the rain barrel. A lot of people use large trash cans as well. This will collect rainwater usually from your gutter and you can use it later to water your lawn, your garden, indoor plants. If you do get the rain barrel, Border Water also has a rebate for this. And we also ask that you water plants before 9:00 AM and after 5:00 PM. And if you have a sprinkler system, please check for leaks or sprinkler heads that are shooting in the wrong direction or maybe broken and just shooting straight out. And more information on the irrigation tips at borderwatersupply.com. And then also a reminder for August 5th, Saturday is our Border Water Supply plant sale. And we have not had this for, gosh, the last three years. But it's back in action. This is Saturday, August 5th again, at the end of Iva Anna Road in Halaba Valley. And we have free shuttles running along the street, there's free parking, free entrance. We have entertainment and it's just a nice gathering in a nice setting from 9:00 to 3:00. Any questions?
Mahalo nu Danny. This is with the Border Water Supply. Members, any questions for the Border Water Supply? Okay, seeing none. Anyone from the community? All right, seeing none. Danny, I do have a question. You know, recently we've, we've, as you know, we've had some discussions about water usage. We've kind of questioned some of the public facing spaces that provide water usage here in the community. And most recently, there's been a question about water usage at the golf course at Olamana Golf Course here in Waimea Nalo. And so I just want to put it on the radar. You know, we want to start having those conversations around what kind of water usage is being utilized at the golf course and what that might look like. So not sure what, how that involves the Border Water Supply at this point in time, but I do want to put it on your radar that there may be an inquiry in some of those ideas coming up.
Okay, we'll do. I'll get some info ready.
Thank you. Secondarily, I watched a little fire ant segment proposed, shared on KHON recently from the Border Water Supply. And I wanted to ask if at this plant sale, have you folks worked in some education about litter fire, little fire ants and some other invasive species? Is that something that the Border Water Supply currently implements in their plant sales and exerescapes?
Um, I don't know for sure, but you know, when we, when we have this sale, we bring in all these experts. We have experts in mulching, working with the worms, fertilization, water. I can find out, but I, I don't, I'm sure hope so, but I can't confirm.
Okay. Yeah, if it can be a follow-up, that would be great. I think that's a great opportunity since plants are leaving one space and traveling. That's exactly how we've learned invasive species can move. And so while I'm not saying that the Border Water Supply is the current cause of those things, I think that's a great proactive approach to educating and informing the community.
For sure. Yes. Thank you. Okay.
Perfect. Danny, thank you so much for your services always and mahalo for your time this evening.
Thank you. Take care.
Mahalo. Members are moving on. We're going to be hearing from the Mayor's rep. Do we have her on? Director Thielen. Yes, we do. Director Thielen, the time is yours. Mahalo for being here.
Thank you. Aloha. Good evening, everyone. On the report, I don't have questions from last month, but we do have a couple announcements. So there's a tax relief for homeowners, a property tax relief that passed in the budget that has gone into effect this year starting July 1. There's going to be a property tax relief for a little over 150,000 qualifying homeowners. And it's going to be a one-time $350 tax credit on the property tax. It's going to be applied directly to property tax bills before they're distributed later on this summer. So about 150,000 homes are going to get a nice present later on this summer. The Iva La Resource Center to help with healthcare and, and housing for a number of houseless people is going to be reopening. They're going to be taking as many as 19 patients at a time, providing them with interim services and then moving to permanent housing, hopefully within one month, them entering into the resource center. And then the city has been able to tap into some additional federal funding, the post-COVID funding to reopen the rent and utility relief program. And so they're going to temporarily reopen for applications with up to 25 million for rent and utility relief and people can go to the oneowahu.org website in order to file applications. People know rail passenger service began, so that was a pretty exciting. I hope people were able to take advantage of the free rides when it did reopen up. And then the last thing is, we were able to reopen two of the park pools completing repairs this summer after a very long time. And then we've been able to use an energy savings contract and we're upgrading the pool pump system and switching out a number of pools to a saltwater system, which is less chemicals in the environment and on people. And it's also more pleasant to swim in. So that's going to be a big upgrade to our different pool facilities around the island. And then I had a chance to, aside from the mayor's report, sit on an island insights with Board Member Kapua Maderos. And she did mention in that conversation, part of an aside was in taking a look at the ranger program that's having more of a cultural approach. And so I've asked the park ranger manager to reach out to Board Member Maderos and also Chair. And then if you folks can, when she does reach out to you, if you have other referrals to send her to through the Neighborhood Board Network, people that have talked to you about being interested in the ranger program, we would really like to work on taking that manual that she developed around rangers, like talking with Maui, Kauai and then also other operations on the continent to try and tie more of that aspect in. She has worked with Doka and she's going to go back and talk with them as well because we understand they've started a internal school. But any additional insights you folks have and contacts that you can share with her would be really welcome. So that's all I have for the report. I'd be happy to take any questions and bring back more information next month.
Director, thank you so much for the report as well as for your service. We have a hand up from Kapua Maderos.
Aloha, Director Thielen. Mahalo for bringing that answer and being able to work with us to create the cultural aspect of the ranger program. My question is actually not with that, but you know, with the rail opening, I was told by someone that there's no restrooms at these rail stations. Is that true? Because I, I think that's kind of odd that all of these stations are far away from other places or that people have to find. It's hard to find a restroom in a public place, especially if kupuna are riding the rail. Did the city not plan to have any restrooms?
Oh, no. And, and what I've heard is from the discussions from the transportation folks is that most rails, like most buses, they do not have restrooms. So they, they do not have them in the stops here. The ride is currently 20 minutes from one end to the other. So most people, you know, it's going to be a fairly short journey because you're not in traffic. So that's...
I don't know if you were able to see.
Before they get on or right after.
Right. I don't know if you're able to see Darrell Huff's coverage on his ride on the rail, but it took way longer than a few minutes because he had to get transfer buses and then he had to, he had to wait for the next one. It took him a couple hours actually on a ride that was supposed to be only 15, 20 minutes. So really, I hope that you guys are going to think about, the city's going to think about kupuna as well as people who have little children that need to use the restroom. Thank you.
Okay. Director, mahalo for that response. Any other members? Questions for the administration? Seeing no hands. Anyone from the public? Okay, seeing no hands. Director, I do have a few questions. If we can get an update on, it doesn't have to be this evening, but we do want to see if there's been any improvements to the contract work for the gym and if there's made any progress there and what that timeline might be looking like for the repairs there. As well as the pavilion, we understand that there was a very well, a very poor planning of a pavilion discussion that the community, unfortunately, not a lot of people had the opportunity to participate in. So we really encourage maybe a follow-up to that. But if there was any report back from that meeting, what that looks like and what the next steps will be for the Gabby Pops Pahinui Pavilion Conversation, we would really appreciate an update there. In addition to the work being done at the rec room at the Waimea Nalo District Park, where that stands, that project stands would be a great update for the community, especially as we move into our hurricane season and that is one of those spaces that was recommended to be a shelter. So we, we want to make sure those things are moving along. And then lastly, if there was any update from the Kapua Beach Park Conversation and the replacement of the restrooms there. I know the male restroom is still very much under closed, excuse me, closed. So we mahalo the city for having some urinals and some porta potties out there. But that's not the experience that I think we really want people in our community and those visiting to have long term. So I know that's definitely not the city's space or idea there. And I think for me, you know, what I really want us to make sure we're continuing to keep in dialogue, Director, is, is how these progressive projects are taking place, but also what their timelines are looking like. We have quite a bit of community events that, you know, are in these spaces and they are, they're lacking these, these resources and they're having a hard time. And so we want people to have a really good place to be and it's in partnership with you folks. So whatever we can do as a community to kokua that, I know we've had some conversations about assisting in some project work and we really want to continue those conversations. So where applicable, the community is willing and ready to do so and be of support. And, and we want to feel like that's, you know, happening on all levels. So however you may think about those things, if we could get an update on those ideas. And then I have a question for the administration and it's specific to invasive species. There's a big focus on this invasive species conversation, particularly at the state level, since they're the main contributor to the, the follow-ups that need to take place as well as the resources. But what is being done on the county level to address invasive species? Waimea Nalo has recently had koki frogs that have gone in some direction. We're, we're waiting for an update there. We've also recently had some impacts with coconut rhinoceros beetles and most recently little fire ants in our agriculture community. And so while these things may take place on state lands, they're going to impact city spaces as well of the community. So what is the administration, if anything, doing to assist our state agency partners and our communities to address these invasive species? Do you know if we have any programs available?
Um, so for the, the questions, let me get back to you on some of these questions, including the programs. I know we just did do some grants on the agricultural side and opened up some programs. I know our urban forestry, just as a matter of practice, has stopped using mulch because that's the breeding ground for the coconut rhinoceros beetle larva. So we've stopped the use of mulch across the parks because we don't want to encourage the spread. But the Owahu invasive species council has pretty much said, you know, we can't, at this point, they feel that it can't prevent the spread on Owahu and so that I think we're, we're... the spread on Oahu. And so that I think we're working with the University of Hawaii on some organic methods that they have that may be appropriate for treatment. So I'll find out what else is being done on the county level. I can also get an update for you next month for the contract work that the Department of Design and Construction is doing on the gym and on the rec room hardening. But I can give you an update of a conversation we had with them on the pavilion and the restrooms at Waimea Ala Beach Park. They have started, Department of Design and Construction had started a contract some years ago for designing the replacement for the roof at the Gabi Pavilion. So that contract is now started. That was the meeting that they held. It was unfortunate at the time they picked and we've talked about having a more, a better time for the future meetings. But we sat down and talked with DDC and said, you know, when you started that contract, the bathrooms were still functioning and there hadn't been arson at the Arts and Crafts Building. But now that they came in and they did that, it would be kind of silly to handle those separately. Can we fold them into the permitting and the design and the construction so we can tackle everything at one time? So they're looking into that now. It's both a funding and a contract question. But they agree that it would be more sensible to approach it that way. And so we'll see if we can come back next month with an answer on whether we're able to adapt the funding and the contracts to be able to go through it all at once. And I think that would just be better for everybody concerned.
Fantastic. We really appreciate that manao and that update. Kapua, you have another comment?
Yeah, and I just wanted to say that I'm glad that they are thinking of that, but I also want them to also be reminded to keep in mind that in Waimea Ala, it's very important that you work with the community, with the neighborhood board before going ahead and starting any kind of projects because, you know, we want to be involved with it. We want to make sure that's what we want. Thank you.
Mahalo. All right, seeing no other questions, Director, we appreciate your time and service. Thank you so much for being here this evening and for the information shared. We look forward to your report. Next month, mahalo. For the record, I want to note, board member Auntie Mabel is here as well as I thought I saw Lulu jump in as well. So Lulu is here as well. I think that brings our count up to six, however. So we still don't have quorum. Okay, members are going to move on. Partner, does filling the vacancies require that quorum too?
Yes, it does.
We're going to defer the filling of the vacancies, members. For the public, we do have a considerable amount of vacancies on this particular board to serve in the following areas. We have an at-large seat. We have a sub-district four Banyan Tree seat. We have a sub-district five Waimea Ala Village seat. A sub-district eight New Homestead seat. This is not the homesteads that were just completed, but this is the homesteads across of the beach park. And then we have an old, old homestead in Beach Home to Makapu vacancy in sub-district nine. And then a farm lot vacancy in sub-district ten. If any of you who are listening to this live in any of those districts and would like to represent your district here at the neighborhood board, we need as many partners as we can, as we continue to work towards the solutions to better our community and create a thriving community that we all wish to see. So we welcome you folks to join us for that and definitely reach out if you have any questions. With that being said, members, due to a lack of quorum, we're going to defer number three as well as number four, initial convening, convening business matters. Until a later date or until quorum is achieved this evening. And that takes us to resident and community concerns and announcements and public reports. We want to remind these folks that are presenting to try and keep the comments to about three to five minutes as much as possible. And we'll start first with those that are on the agenda. We do see the Department of Transportation here this evening that did request some time. And I see Mr. Armstrong's hand up. Mr. Armstrong, do you have an update to share? Our community concern or a public report? Is that why your hand is up? You can unmute. I would definitely appreciate that. Sorry, Mr. Armstrong, can you unmute real quick?
Sorry, I thought I did. I apologize.
No problem.
I'll be very grateful.
We will get to you in just a minute. I just wanted to make sure you were sharing. All right, do we have anyone here from Ola Manu Golf Course? Okay, this is in regards to the Ola Manu Golf Course application and extension of their lease. So I would like to move this discussion and follow up into the following committees. Should they be created? But they're going to be moved into committee discussion with the community planning and the Kuanai Ke Hawaii Committee. I think it's important that those committees take a focused look in on this agreement and the application to extend the lease there at Ola Manu Golf Course. Hawaii Bicycling League, Mr. Salis.
Aloha, how are you guys doing today?
Aloha, welcome. Thank you so much for being here. The time is yours, sir.
Yes, I just wanted to announce that Hawaii Bicycling League is going to be hosting the Honolulu Century Ride on September twenty-fourth. I have a handout that I'm putting in chat right now to show the route and some key facts. But we'll be starting in town at six thirty and heading through Waimea Ala probably roughly around seven thirty-eight. And then people will be coming back throughout the day at a much slower rate. But we also have a backroads cleanup that will be next month on the nineteenth. I have a flyer in chat right now for that as well. But yeah, if you have any questions about our event, we're expecting, I think, about thirteen hundred riders this year.
Aloha. So just to go off of what Chris was saying about the Waimea Ala cleanup, by the way, hi, my name is Lauren. Thank you Chair and Board for giving us some time to speak about our events. We're super excited for our fortieth anniversary of Honolulu Century Ride. I recognize some faces from last year's presentation. So again, thank you. But to go off the Waimea Ala cleanup, it's going to be on Saturday, August nineteenth. We'll be there from eight thirty AM to one PM. And lunch will be provided by our organization, HBL, at around twelve o'clock. So we'll be partnering up with Hawaii, Job Corps Hawaii. We worked with them for many, many years with the Waimea Ala Backroad Cleanup. We'll also be partnering with the DNC's Storm Water Quality Group. They usually help us provide supplies. They provide water as well. And then, you know, we'll bring the people. So if you'd like to join us, we do have a volunteer sign up. Or you can just show up, the more the merrier. But I'll go ahead and I'll put the volunteer sign up sheet momentarily. If you're, we do have a flyer, I believe, that Chris just put in the chat that just shows you what areas we're expected to clean up. But last year, we, I don't remember the pounds that we were able to clean up, but we had so many bags and it was honestly super amazing. You can check out last year's photo on our Instagram. But we hope more people come out and we welcome you all to join us. So thank you again for your time and thank you.
Hello, Lauren. Thank you, Chris, for the update. Members, any questions for the Hawaii Bicycling League? Okay, I see no hands. Chris, I do have a question. You mentioned you're looking at thirteen hundred participants this year. What was the total count the last time this event ran?
Last year, I think we were just under a thousand.
Okay, so we're picking up almost three hundred folks more. Is there a cap to how many people are allowed to participate in this event?
No cap.
Okay. Is there a timeline where this event completes and that's, that's the end? Everyone needs to be finished by a certain time?
Yes, we, we have certain cutoff points at each age station where we won't let people continue on past that. So everyone will be off the road and finished back in town by five PM. Because we have roving support that will be out there helping people and there will be no support after certain timelines in certain areas. So we want to make sure that people are safe and good out on the road.
Fantastic. Last question. Does this century ride take any other routes? Go ahead.
For the most part, no. We've changed a few turns here and there over the years due to road conditions or safety concerns. But for the most part, it stays fairly the same.
And then just for confirmation, can you tell me where it starts at again and where it ends?
It starts and ends at Kapalawani Regional Park.
Okay. I really appreciate your, your attention to the details. And and the reason I question that is because as the community continues to join other communities and bearing the burden of having additional traffic on our roads, our very congested roads. We want to look at ways that we can help to mitigate the impacts there and see if there's additional routes that can be offered to your participants. It's not a, it is not a, an unknown idea here in Waimea Ala that the community struggles with, with some of the larger bike events, obviously, on our roads. And so I just want to be very transparent that while we're working to create safer spaces for the participants, the, the community's safety is also important. So, you know, we have situations right now that's being discussed and potentially that will create used lanes or shared lanes on the road, but there's still areas of our community that lack sidewalks. And so we won't want to prioritize other things that aren't community focused. So when that conversation does come up, because it will come up again, I hope that we can reach out to you folks and have the Bicycling League's perspective on it. Because it's going to require all of us to work on those solutions together.
Of course, of course, yes.
We'd love to work with you guys. We are a nonprofit and this is one of our biggest fundraisers and we're all for safer streets for everyone. We just want to, our motto is ride, ride aloha because we feel like everyone deserves a safe place for transportation. So yes, we look forward to that.
Fantastic. Appreciate you folks. I apologize. We have two more questions. We have one from board member Ralston. And then we'll follow up with Ohana T. after that. Mr. Ralston.
People from the Bicycling League for addressing us and telling us what's coming. One thing I wanted just to say in kind of a general way, we always are somewhat affected by the people riding side by side as opposed to in tandem. And as many promises are made that that will never happen, it always happens. And the, the other piece that is disconcerting to drivers who aren't used to large groups of bicyclists is they often don't obey the stop signs. They'll don't want to get off. They want to take the, the foot out of the, out of the trap. And so try to keep the bike stable without moving much and ended up, you know, you see people falling every now and then and it's really hard to predict what they're going to do. So that if it's a stop sign, they got to stop, is my view of how it works. But I think we need some discipline in, in, in the part of the people in order to protect themselves and also allow as much transportation to occur as can be. Thank you.
Mahalo, Ted, thank you. And for the record, Ted is the current Chair of the Transportation Committee for our community. And so we look forward to hopefully his reaching out to you folks. Ohana T., would you folks like to acknowledge a question? And if you can introduce yourself when you unmute, that would be great. Ohana T.
Chair, they just, they just put in the chat that their mic doesn't work.
Okay, call them I. Let's go ahead and see what that looks like. You can type your comment in the, in the chat and we can go ahead and ask it on your behalf, if that's okay. Okay, doesn't look like it's anything different. If anything does come up, we do have the contact information for HBL. So we'll, we'll send that over to you folks. Lauren, Chris, thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you so much. I'll put the volunteer. Thank you for your time.
All right, we're going to move over to Brian Kimora with Hawaii Department of Transportation. Brian, the time is yours.
I just have one update and that is the Kalaniala Highway Phase Two project is, is still on schedule to complete at the end of August. So that's next month.
Perfect. Brian, I know you've been working really hard with Ted and the Transportation Committee to keep abreast of the concerns. Mahalo you for taking the brunt of the community's frustrations with regards to traffic. And then I know we have a long laundry list that we've been working on for the last couple of months to address some other items that are safety related and transportation related. So I really appreciate you making time to be here this evening. Members, any questions, Ted?
Yes, Brian, thanks for coming on again. And we don't have a transportation board meeting this month, I don't believe. And as a result, we'll be not having one until we're just about done with the project. I'd like to recommend we, as I sent an email to you, that we do another walk around or walk through towards the early part of August. About the time we would, having our next meeting, so we can make sure that all the issues that we've identified in the past and new ones that have come up, such as the access on the Makai side of Kalaniala Ole. We can log them all down and also thinking about transitioning into the maintenance program and how that will apply. So if you can, and I don't know that we need all the guys, but certainly you and, and maybe one of the project managers would be good to do that last check.
Okay, well, I'll try and get that schedule and see everybody's availability.
In addition to that, Brian and Ted, can we also try to have someone from the, from Mira to be present in that walkthrough?
That's, that's what we kind of generally have is, is somebody from Mira or somebody from the project itself. Mira's a contractor, of course, but.
Perfect. Mahalo. Anyone else? Members, questions for Hawaii Department of Transportation? All right, seeing no other questions. Brian, thank you so much for your service. We look forward to working with you future.
Thank you, everyone.
Mahalo. All right, Mr. Armstrong, thank you so much for your time and patience. Please go ahead and introduce yourself and your and the time's yours. Mahalo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to address you. My name is Robert Armstrong. And I am a member of the Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board and I'm very impressed with what I see and hear here. And, and certainly your reputation precedes you. I'm here to make not only the board, but all residents of Waimea Ala and surrounding areas, as well as this island in general, aware of an upcoming meeting that we'd like to ask your participation with. And that is on Saturday, nineteenth of August, at one PM in Chinatown on eleven fifty-two Smith Street. That is the old Channel fourteen television studios. Now it's the New Life Center. And there's city parking right behind the building in a garage off of Baritania. So it's pretty easy in and out. Again, Saturday, nineteenth of August, twenty twenty-three at one PM at eleven fifty-two Smith Street. And here's the thesis of the meeting. I think we all can agree that the neighborhood board system is a pretty impressive system when it's working on all cylinders and when the community is really ginned up and involved with what we do. But it's been almost or just about fifteen years since the neighborhood plan was revitalized and reinvigorated and even reimagined. And I think it's time that somebody starts this effort. So we decided to get this underway. Whether it's the neighborhood board plan, it's the jurisdictions that we all are a part of, it's the makeup of our boards, the Neighborhood Commission Office, the commissioners themselves and how they're selected, whatever the public wants to speak at. We're going to have a grassroots meeting of all of these topics and kind of try and figure out how do we move forward in creating a white paper for the Neighborhood Commission and then City Council and the mayor. And that all gets underway on Saturday, nineteenth of August, at one PM at eleven fifty-two Smith Street. And I encourage everyone on the island to participate. We really don't have an agenda and we're just kind of a very loose way of structuring this. And we're just going to kind of let democracy percolate from below and rise up and create the best neighborhood board system that we possibly can have on this island because it deserves nothing less. And I thank you for the opportunity to share this with you and I look forward to seeing you.
Fantastic. Mr. Armstrong, thank you so much for making time to join our community board this meeting and share that update. Certainly, this community shares likely thoughts that improvements need to be made. So we, we look forward to participating, participating in that meeting. If you can, share that information in the chat. I'd really appreciate it as well. Member Kapua, question?
I was just going to ask if there was a flyer that we could share. Thank you.
Okay. My, and then a question, Mr. Armstrong. Has this conversation about the adjustments gone before the commission? Or are you doing this with the intent of taking it before the commission?
When you said adjustments, it kind of threw me. To relook at the neighborhood plan, this is meant to be a community effort. And, and when we are finished, then we will take it as prescribed in the neighborhood plan to the commission itself. And so, you know, I've been on the neighborhood board for five years. I, I And so, um, you know, I, I've been on the neighborhood board for five years. I, I, I'm, I'm sure you uh have been on for quite some time and um, I was waiting for actually this process to kind of come from administration. But probably it's better that it comes from the people anyways. And so, uh, you know, I, I, I've always felt that if uh, you know, this has something to do with my upbringing, that if you see a problem, it's upon you to come up with some solutions, not just complain about it. And so I, I want to encourage people to participate on the nineteenth of August because we really do need this to be in the very best uh grassroots ethos as possible. So that, you know, even things we have never done before, never thought of, might come to the fore and we get a chance to discuss it and research and, and see what best practices are around the country, although I think we have a pretty good system as it is. It just needs to be sharpened a bit. And so, um, so we're got to start with our own initiative and then take it to the powers that be when it's finished.
Fantastic. Mr. Armstrong, thank you for taking that upon yourself to initiate the conversation. We applaud your efforts. We look forward to participating in that. Thank you so much for your time.
Mahalo.
Mahalo. Good night. Uh, do we have anyone else that are here to share resident community concerns, announcements or public reports? If you can raise your hand. Austin, are you here to provide an update by any chance or are you just here to listen?
Well, just here to listen and check in. Yeah.
Mahalo. All right, we're gonna move on. I don't see any hands up. Oh, Anticapu, you have a hand up?
Yes, I do. Uh, I have a concern and this involves all of our community. Um, I just wanted to share that because I um um, or was and may still be the Parks and Recreation Chair for the Park and Recreation Committee. Um, I just wanted to share with everyone tonight on this call of this meeting that we've been having ongoing problems with people cutting the fence at Hunananiho. Um, and I, that's on the Aloha Loa Street side. As soon as the city repaired it, it was cut again. Um, but it not only happens there, it happens right on the highway where they cut it and then slide it back and forth so that their motorbikes can go through or mopeds, um, or even cars. I was asking that all, everyone in the community be aware of it because it's illegal. Um, and it's costing our taxpayers, like us, money uh that we have to keep funding, footing the bill to fix these things that shouldn't have to be done. Um, it, having the fences there is for our re- a reason. It's for our safety of our park users, um, which we are. So I ask that we, as a community, take an active role in, if you see something, say something. Because that has to end um of people just feeling like they can come along and cut fences that were put up to protect the environment as well as park users. Mahalo.
Hey, mahalo. Anyone else? All right, seeing no hands, we're gonna move on. Members, thank you so much. We're gonna move over to our community organization report, starting off with Waianaealo Elementary and Intermediate School. Do we have Principal Delacruz on this evening? Or anyone from the resource center? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we're gonna move on. Uh, it gives me the uh wonderful privilege this evening of introducing the new principal to Waianaealo, excuse me, Blanch Pope Elementary and Kikula Kaya Puni o Waianaealo. Uh, Principal Heidi Resentis has joined our community uh and is going to be fulfilling the role of principal at Blanch Pope Elementary, as I mentioned. Uh, and we really want to welcome you, uh, principal, to our community. If you want to share a little bit about yourself and maybe some of your background uh and any updates that you have. I know you've just kind of stepped into that role, but uh, we're so very thankful that you uh were selected and that you are here to serve our community forward. So we'll turn it over to you, principal. Mahalo for your time.
Hi, aloha, everyone. Good evening, Heidi Resentis. Um, humbled and excited to be the new principal of Pope Elementary School. Um, just a little bit about myself, I was the vice principal at Kailua High School uh for about seven years. Um, so I do know the community of Waianaealo. I've worked with the students and the families of Waianaealo. So um, you know, just looking forward to continuing that relationship with the Waianaealo families and communities. Um, and I do have a couple, I guess, announcements or updates to share as well. Um, first of all, our first day for teachers is going to be August first. Um, we do have a meet and greet on August seventh, um, starting at four thirty PM. Um, and we see the students um on August eighth. So the first day of school is August eighth. Um, I do want to outreach, um, if, you know, those here um can help us. We do have some pre-K spaces available in both the English and Hawaiian language, Hawaiian immersion classes. Um, this is for ages three and four. Um, if you do want more information, I can certainly um get that for you folks. Or you, um, if you do have people that want um more information, they can certainly call our school office. Um, from Monday through Friday, seven thirty to four thirty, we are open then, um, so that they can get some information on that. Um, other than that, um, it's only been a week on the job for me. So, you know, I'm still learning, um, getting acclimated um to all the things that I need to do to open up the school year, but I do look forward um to working with the community again. Mahalo.
Mahalo, principal. Uh, members, any questions for Blanch Pope Elementary, Kikula Kaya Puni o Waianaealo? Okay, seeing none. We certainly look forward and we welcome you again with open arms back into our community and we look forward to your service to uh, to our keke. Mahalo Nui for being here. Thank you.
Mahalo.
And on a separate note, principal, you will get an invitation to have a um, a representative at our education committee. Um, that would be something that we would love to have your folks um manao on as well as your presence in. So we'll, we'll tie up a little bit more about those conversations at the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you. Looking forward to it.
Fantastic. Mahalo. Have a good evening. We're moving on. Malama Honoa Public Charter School. Okay, hearing none, we're gonna move on. Hui Malamo Kikai. Okay, moving on. Windward Community College. I do see our chancellor. Chancellor, the time is yours. Mahalo for being here.
Aloha, my kakul. Aloha, Chair. Um, I thought tonight would be appropriate to talk about the work that we're doing with Kailua High School to create Halau Hekili Thunder Academy. We are going to host a freshman class of Kailua High School students primarily from Waianaealo, I believe, when we looked at the demographics. Um, but it's not all completely yet. Um, we will be hosting a freshman class on campus. Windward will serve as their primary high school campus location. So they can take classes with us. They'll have access to all our facilities. But we will pick them up from Kailua, so transportation won't be a barrier. Drop them off in time for them to do sports and activities. And they'll spend every Friday on the Kailua campus because Friday is usually when they have what used to be called pep rallies, not anymore. Assemblies, I think they're called assemblies now. So old, feeling even older every single day. But um, we're going to make sure that they're well engaged with their high school colleagues and other students and activities. But also give them that enriched um atmosphere of being in college. We are outfitting a new room for them that'll have great technology. They're going to be completing by the end of their senior year, at the very least, our Hawaiian Knowledge Innovation Certificate. So that includes Hawaiian studies, computer science and business, so they can be social entrepreneurs with a really strong cultural foundation. Also, depending on how hard they work their senior year, they could possibly complete their AA by the end of their senior year. So we're super excited about it. We tried to target any kid who is willing to take um a chance and do this and not just try to target kids that were already AP and going on into um the AP pathway at Kailua. We really didn't want to compete for those kids, but give a whole new set of kids or students this opportunity to have significant college achievement in this amazing setting. There'll be a high school teacher on our campus. We'll have a counselor who's attached to the program. We're gonna put a couple peer mentors with them. Purple Maita is partnering with us to do a lot of enrichment activities and technology. Really excited about it and um, hopefully, we're, we could only have fourteen students because that's how many seats there are in a van. But we're really hoping next year to be able to take more students. We had um a few more apply than we have seats for. So that's my big news. The other news is that we had now have a one-year certificate in theater with our Hawaii Conservatory Hawaii Theater Conservatory Program. It's the only one like it in Hawaii. It's a one-year applied acting. They learned how to do stage combat, classical acting, as well as prepping them to do film careers, to take advantage of the various filming and acting opportunities here on this island. We also have partnerships with a acting studio in England and another in Washington. So if they choose to go on, they will be um well articulated and ready to go at a number of different institutions as well. So those are my two big, exciting, new things happening this fall. Mahalo for your time.
Chancellor, mahalo Nui for your service and thank you so much for leading the way for many of our people in this kind of learning. We, we certainly look forward to expanding that. So thank you and congratulations. Mahalo. Members, any questions for the chancellor? Okay, I'm seeing none. Chancellor, I do have a question in regards to kind of what the director had shared earlier, Director Phelan. You know, we've been having some conversations around invasive species. UH Manoa is not the only campus that can offer resource to our community. And being that WCC is nesorin ko'ola' poko, are there spaces in your current or in a future realm that you folks might be able and willing to facilitate some research learning for our community in regards to invasive species?
Yeah, I'd love to partner with that. I don't know if I should reach out to um Representative Phelan or if um, how we should work it, but uh, we do have both the Limu Project going, coming up, which will allow for invasive species and other kinds of research in that. And we're really hoping to partner what strongly with the community for the Limu research. We're working on revitalizing our sustainable ag, which allows for another um, place for us to look at invasive species and competition within the environment. And I'm sure that there's some other ways that we could partner and do that too. We have great science facilities and I have some great science faculty, I'm sure, and especially in our Hawaiian Studies faculty too. It's such an opportunity for cross-disciplinary learning and getting students involved in, from a variety of perspectives, because there's so much that we have to think about with just the concept of invasive species.
Fantastic. Yeah, if there's a, if there's a space for us to further that conversation, please tag me into it. Uh, I, I think we've, we've come to a point of needing to diversify who does research and how it's done. Right? We know that there is a need, uh, and these are the people that are facing forward into our community. Ahu'pua systems is a huge thing for us. And so it, in my head, makes sense. And if I'm wrong, I need you to tell me that I'm wrong. But I want us to make sure we can, we can continue to pursue challenging Manoa because you are our primary in that regard, in my opinion. Uh, and, and duly noted, you know, we want you folks to really lead that way for our community. And, and that's something that if we can con- continue to, to support in and advocate for, uh, we'll be there.
Thank you so much, Chair. I, I'm really thankful to be thought of in that way. And why don't we sit down with my science people and just start to form a plan of what we could do?
Fantastic.
People I think would really get on board with that. And that's such a way to inspire students who don't even know that that's what they want to do yet.
Absolutely.
Mahalo.
Chancellor, mahalo for your service. We look forward to uh continuing to work with you and learning from you. Mahalo Nui and congratulations. Members, we're moving on. Uh, Auntie Ilima is on traveling right now, so she did send a, a report. I'm gonna read her report. This is from the uh College of Tropical, Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources. This is her report. Excuse me. All right. Uh, so this is from Auntie Ilima, Lasimosa Ho. Kalamai, I'm traveling. Happy summer to all. We have four aloha aina scholars this summer. They are delivering programs and services to the community, helping with many projects that serve Waianaealo, especially keke and opio. Please share that we have had multiple thefts of kalo taken from the haumana of Malama Public Charter School, Malama Honoa Public Charter School. The haumana have been working all summer long and they are devastated. Ag theft is a serious issue. Stealing from our keke is a disgrace. I hope they choke on it and you may quote me. Mahalo Nui, kekkuapu. Uh, that is from Auntie Ilima. Uh, again, that question of invasive species will be asked to Citar as well in their work and in their research, but I've seen the firsthand um impacts that the theft of the kalo that these keke have been working on has had on these keke. And it's questioned the integrity and character of individuals and humans. And so we are not, it is not okay to steal from our keke and we need to work harder to uh, to work on figuring out what's happening there. So mahalo Auntie Ilima for sharing that very important update. And of course, our aloha goes out to all of those that are impacted by um, this very unfortunate situation that's been impacting Citar as well as other ag spaces too. So mahalo for that update. Uh, we're gonna continue on with Auntie Julie, Hawaii Job Corps. I think she might be on the phone. Auntie Julie, are you on any one of our phones? Okay, not hearing any. I just want to share that the Hawaii Job Corps recently celebrated their first in-person graduation. Um, they had about twenty or so graduates in multiple fields. And we were very pleased to be able to attend uh and support and serve uh the continued motions and movements that their students are taking. Uh, we look forward to them continually serving our community as well as trying to uh continue to develop within our community the programs and resources that will serve us forward. So uh, congratulations to the class of twenty twenty-three Hawaii Job Corps, to the staff, to the family uh and to the community for celebrating their accomplishments and achievements. Mahalo. We're gonna move over to the Waianaealo Health Center with Jasmine. Jasmine, the time is yours. Mahalo for being here.
Aloha, thank you for having me. I wanted to share a few announcements. One is the return of our WIC Ohana Makake. Uh, that is open to all WIC families in Hawaii. It's a special pop-up produce market. And WIC participants, WIC participants with an active E-WIC card can come pick up thirty dollars of fresh locally grown produce, which includes poi, and that's per family once a month. And that's in addition to the fruit and veggie amount that families are allotted each month. And if a WIC member is not able to make it themselves, they can send their ohana or a friend with their E-WIC card to pick up the produce. So we're having two this month. One is July fourteenth from ten AM to two PM. And the other one is July twenty-eighth from ten AM to two PM. And that'll be at our original site at Waianaealo Health Center. And we'll share some reminders on social media as well. And next, I wanted to share that we are hiring. So we have full-time and part-time positions, excellent benefits on the job training, and there's positions open across the different departments in the health center. So whether that's medical, dental, um, finance, um, patient service representatives, all types of areas. So if anyone's interested in looking for positions, waianaealohealth.org/careers has all the available openings. And lastly, just wanted to share that we're still offering the COVID nineteen vaccine at the health center. And to make an appointment, you can call our main line, two five nine seven nine four eight. Mahalo.
All right, mahalo Nui, Jasmine. Thank you and congratulations on restarting the program. We look forward to how it serves our community forward. Do you happen to know how many participants have been participating in that in the past? And how many people you assume we might be serving?
Um, I don't have those exact figures, but I can ask. I do know it was at first like a pilot program and it did so well that the program was approved to continue. So that was exciting. It's also going to expand to Kahuku. Uh, so we'll be able to reach that area as well. Uh so we'll be able to reach that area as well. I will find out numbers. I know there was um one of the days they ran out of produce. So it has been popular and there has been good turnout. I'll get back to you with the numbers.
Mahalo, and it goes without saying, Jasmine, how has the outreach been to our Waianalo ag community? Um have they been invited to participate in providing? And what is the kind of response you're getting from them?
Um well, that kind of touches on two things. So we have the farmer's market in which we have been trying to get produce from farmers. And Jennifer Conway, who is our director for health promotions and leading that program, uh she has tried, it sounds like, everything she can to reach out to uh anyone and everybody to see if we can get people. So there's a couple of vendors that join us, but they're not main produce and farmers. So we're still looking for that connection for farmer's market. Uh for this one, for the Makake, it's a relationship, I believe, with Farm Link that's in place that brings the produce over. I don't think that one is, at this time to my knowledge, and I can ask to clarify. Um I think the produce is already set to come in for the Makake. A little different than the farmer's market. We definitely need vendors for the farmer's market if there is anyone looking for that.
Okay. Um maybe if you can, at your earliest convenience, connect me to that individual that you just mentioned. And if she can share with me who she's contacted, maybe we can expand who who might be able to help within the network. Um you know, certainly Sitar has a has a program that obviously might be able to fit into this. Go Farm, you know, these people have homes in Waianalo. And so if Waianalo farmers are asked to step up, this is a great opportunity to see how we can kokuah that as well.
Mahalo for that. I will connect you and Jennifer.
Perfect. Mahalo. Seeing no other questions, we appreciate your services always and mahalo for the time this evening. Thank you. All right, do we have anyone here from the Homestead Association? Kenneth Ho? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Uh I'm going to introduce the new commander at Bellows Air Force Station. Uh I would like to introduce Major Dalen Chen. Major Chen is married with two children. His wife is from Millilani. They both served in the Hawaii Air National Guard and he uh and attended UH Manoa and Hawaii Pacific University. Major Chen served as prior aircraft mechanic and currently serves as a force support officer. He's been assigned to fourteen bases and has helped plan multiple exercises across the Pacific to include the supporting various countries aligned under the United Nations Command. He's very passionate about leading the Bellows team, working alongside the Waianalo community to strengthen our common goals. With that being said, I uh will pass the time over to Major Dalen Chen. Mahalo, Major, for being here.
Aloha, thank you uh for introducing me. I appreciate it. Thank you again for uh having me uh be a part of this. I'm excited uh to be here, learning quite a bit, learning quite a bit about the the local community as well. Um yeah, it it it's really great and I do really, really appreciate um you know, just the opportunity to kind of kind of be involved, right? So we we have meetings again, even with uh Kimi Ona on Tuesdays as well. And I just, I feel really blessed to to be able to be a part of it. So but I am looking forward to doing uh more things with the local community, coming up with uh you know, common goals and getting after um just helping where we can, you know.
Mahalo, Major, for that. Do you have any updates on Bellows that you want to share at this time or still trying to figure out what is relevant?
Um so um so checking out what's relevant, uh no major updates at the moment. Um but we are looking at a few different things uh in regards to um the munitions and those kinds of things. But I'm penning a little bit more information. Uh so I don't want to just share it just yet uh until I get a couple, a couple of things uh cleared.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Members, any questions for the new commander, Major Dalen Chen of Bellows Air Force Station? All right, uh Major Chen, I do have a question for you and I know it's been brought up many times this evening. Uh we want to continue to have the conversations about invasive species, little fire ants, koki frogs, uh coconut rhinoceros beetles. And so I want to make sure that the base in uh collaboration with the Marine Corps Base Hawaii, as well as our local resources, that there is being, you know, attention being paid and shared to the mitigation and eradication of of any invasive species that pose a threat to the liveliness of our community. And so I know we've mentioned it to you before. I just want to put that on record that um there is still that ask to continue to collaborate with the resources necessary to bring attention and mitigate those things. So um I know Craig has reached out and been able to respond to some of that. But if that's something that you can prioritize on your list as well, we would really appreciate it.
Uh yes, sir, we'll we'll do it. And I'll speak to Craig about it again. And I know we have had conversations about that, you know, things we can do. If it's maybe just cleaning up, um a little bit clean up the house a little bit, you know, any uh dead trees or anything lying around we can kind of get rid of. Uh so we're talking about that. But uh yes, I will go ahead and uh mention it and uh follow up with you.
Fantastic. We appreciate your service, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Apologies. Auntie Kapua, you have a question?
Um mainly just uh to tag on on what you you're asked. Um is that not only the plant life that exists in um not only the environment at Bellows or at Marine, but also things that are being shipped in from other islands or from other places that come with invasive species? Paying attention to that because we were told that anything coming in from uh Moko Keavie or the Big Island is a potential of carrying, has a potential of carrying um koki frogs as well as LFA. And and we were also um told that now Moko Keavie is at the point of no return from LFA. And we don't want to see Waianalo at that point of no return. Um we want all of these invasive species to be wiped out before we become uh reach the point of no return. And LFA is very dangerous. You know, if this is not a regular red ants that we grew up with, this is uh ants that are um that that are, it's very painful. Um and if it's on every tree in every area of Waianalo, then all of our children uh run the risk of being attacked by these LFA as well as all of our plant life being in danger. So I just thank you for bringing that up, mahalo.
Mahalo.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we'll we'll definitely be in contact, Major. I know when vehicular traffic comes in and out, you know, we definitely want to check if there's any kind of precautionary uh measures being taken to check and and accommodate, you know, any changes that need to happen in process. So we'll be in discussion for sure.
Copy. Yes, thank you.
Mahalo nui, thank you for being here. All right, members, we're moving on to Marine Corps Base Hawaii. Oh, yes. Who was that?
Julie Dukin with Hawaii Job Corps. I was on mute earlier. Uh may I expand upon your report?
Uh please do. I'm sorry, Gunnery Sergeant, we're going to take uh Hoi Job Corps before you, if you don't mind, sir. Please, Auntie Julie, yes, we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm joining by by phone tonight. But again, like Kimi Ona said, we were able to celebrate twenty-four of our young adults that were able to obtain their high school diploma, the first in-person graduation in three years. So it was very exciting to celebrate them with their ohana and all the staff. And thank you for all of our community partners, including Kimi Ona, the Hawaii Police Department, the Community Policing Team, Matt Wong from the Waipahu School for Adults. Um our council member, Esther Kiana, did special certificates for each of them. And Congressman Case did a beautiful message that they'll all be able to to include with their high school diploma. So that was very exciting. Um in addition to our students concentrating on their career and educational goals, we want them to be part of the the community, you know, civic engagement. And so on a regular basis, we're next door at the district park, helping Auntie Audrey distribute food to those in need twice a month. Um Lonnie Brown, our construction instructor, a Waianalo resident, um goes over to the Waianalo Emergency Shelter, formerly known as uh Weinberg Village, uh weekly to help restore some of the um units they have so more family could, families can move in. Um at the end of uh June, uh the Waianalo Regatta happened and our students went down and helped kind of spruce up the the um the bathrooms by painting and 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 cleaning up the ground so we can really showcase our our Waianalo community. Um for Memorial Day, we were out at the Waianalo Research Center, um cutting plumarias so they could be sewn into lays and placed on the grave sites um of the veterans on Memorial Day. And then, of course, I think the Bicycle League always mentioned, already mentioned that we're going to be helping with their community uh cleanup. Um and that's something we've done for many years. So uh my last comment is that we are continuing our enrollment drive. So those of you out there in the listening community, if you know young adults that need to finish their high school diploma in need of career training, Hawaii Job Corps might be the place. So um my contact is in all the Waianalo board information. Give me a call. Mahalo.
Auntie Julie, thank you so much for sharing more details about your work. But we have a question by a member, Ralston.
Just more a compliment than a question, Chair. I just wanted to pass the word to uh all of us that uh a group I brought through the uh the Job Corps back in March from the Marshall Islands uh was is now back in the Marshall Islands. And the group I work with is building a environmental research center down there out of out of durable materials and uh to assist with the coming climate change situation down there. But as we toured the toured the group of executives and governor, government people from the Marshall Islands through the Job Corps, just to retouch that, it turned out that two of the government members actually were graduates of Auntie Julie's operations there at the Job Corps. So that was just a pretty cool thing to see that that loop being closed. And so uh whatever whatever uh is going on there, it's it's pretty good. So I just wanted to pass that thanks on to Auntie Julie.
Fantastic. Um Auntie Julie, I do have a question for the Job Corps. And maybe you can take it back. Do you folks have any um programs that may assist in assisting the community to identify and um work on invasive species specifically in Waianalo?
We do, we do not at this current time.
Okay, maybe we can have a conversation.
Yeah, I know in the in the past, we've helped with the um, you know, they've come out and did the presentation about the 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 red ants. And we've helped identify those on site. But yes, we're open for a conversation.
Yeah, what I'm thinking is, you know, we may need to have come up with some community resources to kokuah our farmers with some manpower to get some testing done. And I'm thinking, how can we engage our educational institutions that, you know, serve Waianalo uh in that particular support of our farmers? And so um maybe let's stay in touch because I do intend on taking a more aggressive approach to addressing uh at least identifying what's taking place within our Waianalo community.
We'd be open for that. Mahalo.
Thank you so much, Auntie Julie. Appreciate you and thank you for jumping back on with us. All right, members, apologies about that. Uh we're going to move on to Marine Corps Base Hawaii. Uh we have Gunnery Sergeant here this evening. Um let's see, where did he go?
Right here.
Perfect. Thank you so much, sir. Uh this is on behalf of the new Colonel, right, Mr. Bevan? So if you can introduce him as well to the community and then we'll go right into your report, that would be great.
Absolutely. So uh first of all, thank you for having me. Um I I hope everybody's doing, everybody's doing great tonight. Uh so as of May twenty-fifth, uh Marine Corps Base Hawaii has a new commanding officer, Colonel Jeremy Bevins. Uh he's coming from us from Okinawa, Japan. He used to be the Aviation Chief of Staff, First Marine Aircraft Wing. Uh so coming over to Marine Corps Base Hawaii, he's really excited to be here. Uh his wife is also very excited to be here. Uh he is slowly slowly starting to make his way around the neighborhood boards. So I'm sorry he can't be here tonight, but he will, he is making a priority to come out to these events. So I wouldn't be surprised if you see him here the next border or so. Uh moving on to topics, so with the change with the change of command, uh both the on uh the outgoing and the incoming commanding officers uh had the opportunity to meet with state representatives and uh state senators. Uh Senator Lee, Senator uh Kilkahaka Lole, Representative Karigawa, and Representative Hesse Burdick. Uh right before that change of command, just to kind of establish that continuity from one commanding officer to the next uh to talk, to discuss any concerns that might come from the uh community or the districts. Uh and just provide that warm handoff from one commanding officer to the next. Uh more recently, uh the base commanding officer uh visited the McTab Fence Line Project with Representative Martin. Uh this was an opportunity for him to kind of walk the fence line and to reaffirm to the representative uh the commitment that we have towards the changes that were requested uh and see it through now that he's taking command and taking over that project. Uh you'll probably hear her mention it later on today as well, which is great. And that's just, again, him reaffirming that commitment to those changes that were requested by the community to make sure that they're seen through from the last commanding officer to this commanding officer. Uh this weekend, Marine Corps Base, Marine Corps Base Hawaii is excited to host the two thousand twenty-three uh John D. Kalpico Canoe Regatta that's taking place on Sunday. Uh we want to welcome all participants, spectators, they want to come on base. As long as you have a government uh ID, you'll have access to the event. Uh and you can see it from both uh both sides of K Bay. It's a fun event. We had it last year and it had been a while. So we look forward to uh a large, large, large participation. Uh and then lastly, we have our July newsletter that I will publish uh here on the chat so everybody can see it. Uh that kind of just goes uh into a little bit more depth as to what's taking, what took place uh on the installation over the past month. Uh it's a good read. We have a additional list. If you want to be part of it, just go ahead and uh go go to this link and you should be able to add your email on there and get added to the additional list for the newsletter.
All right, Gunnery Sergeant, thank you so much for the update. Members, any questions for Marine Corps Base Hawaii? All right, I'm seeing none. Gunnery Sergeant, will you be presenting on behalf of the Marine Corps Base Hawaii moving forward? If you can unmute, sir?
Sorry about that. So we do have a new public affairs officer. He's currently on leave, kind of getting situated, uh Major Jordan Fox. He was actually the uh public affairs officer for the MAG down the street, so he's pretty familiar with the area. So him and I will be sharing our responsibilities, kind of, you know, spreading the load when it comes to these neighborhood boards.
Fantastic. Uh I do ask if you can share some of the contact information for yourselves, uh those that will be presenting. Uh and then in light of the relationship building and continuity, you know, I ask that you share that message with the commander. Um you know, not that I'm anybody special, but we did have pretty good direct contact with the previous commander, Cooperakis. And so my cell phone is available to your commander as well. And I hope that he can reciprocate that relationship there and we look forward to strengthening that as we work. Um additionally, if I may add, while it may be appropriate on base for you folks to call Kani Ohebe K Bay, I kindly ask that you folks educate yourself a little bit more on the proper names of our spaces here in Hawaii. Uh it's a great opportunity to learn from our communities and it's wonderful to hear the history. So if you folks need some education on the cultural uh aspects of our communities, uh we certainly would not mind or hesitate providing those cultural resources to you folks. Um so please take that back with an open heart, that it is a way for us to continue to promote and preserve the culture that you folks are stepping into here in Hawaii. Uh we really look forward to our continued learning together, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Wonderful. Members, if there's no questions, we're going to move on. Fantastic. Gunnery Sergeant, your time is appreciated, sir. Thank you for your service.
Mahalo for having me.
Mahalo. All right, do we have anyone here from Hawaii Army National Guard, Major Dodge? Major Dodge, are you present this evening? Okay, moving on. We are at our elected officials reports, members. It's eight thirty-three. I want us to be conscious of our time as we continue to press forward. Uh we mahalo our councilwoman and all of our elected officials for your patience as we work through our agenda. Councilwoman Kiaaina, the time is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, uh everyone. Good evening. Uh this uh my update's going to be very short. If people would like details with regard to, I've been talking about rural property taxes for a long time as well as our budget. If people have any questions, please give me a call. Uh what I wanted to talk to you about first is a uh something very sad. Uh Kapua uh is aware of it as well. Our dear classmate, Darrell Young, uh who was the administrator for the community-based development dish uh division of the city, uh which is part of the Department of Community Services. Many of you uh may have known him. He's been very active in dealing with um our our homeless service providers as well He's been very active in dealing with, um, our, our homeless service providers as well as communities and has been working with the neighborhood board as well as the various subcommittees, uh, to help, um, establish a both a whole new program as well as a traditional, uh, program, uh, for our homeless community. And he passed away, uh, on July 5th. So I just wanted to let everybody know that this is going to be a, uh, a loss, not only for the city, but for our communities as well as the state of Hawaii. Second, I wanted to, uh, follow up on, uh, Laura Thielen mentioned the rental utility relief program. And I need to let everybody know that, uh, there's going to be a specific outreach program at Windward Community College on Thursday, this Thursday at ten to four thirty, Halli O'oh, Rooms 101 and 102. And I have to tell you, I'm a little surprised. We're trying to fight for everybody, but only five people have signed up. So we need a keha to let everybody know because the, uh, Office of Economic Revitalization is poised to sign up 100 people at this event. They just have to be new applicants. So if you know, uh, uh, family members or friends who are in need of assistance, I highly recommend that they come to this event. Although, um, the system was requiring that people, um, set up an appointment because of the lack of interest, they're going to be accepting walk-ins. So again, I highly recommend it. Uh, Gloria has put into the chat box, the, um, the information and chair I sent to all of the chairs. Uh, if you guys could send it out again, we really need your Koko. Uh, and I deliberately had it in Ka, in Kanihohe because I understand from Senator Kiohaka Lole that there are a lot of, um, uh, lot in our Hawaiian community who are hurting in Kanihohe. And so I'm just a little shocked by the response. At this event, there will also be, uh, someone to outreach with regard to the federal, um, Communication Commission's Affordable Connectivity Program. And I, I'm hoping that the majority of people on this phone call are well aware of it. Uh, Gloria will be putting in the chat box the application for this. This provides, this is all federal related. This provides, um, an avenue for those who qualify, uh, to have either a 30-month discount for broadband services to qualifying households. And if you live on Hawaiian homelands, that increases to $75 a month. So, uh, Gloria, if you could put the link for that FCC provision in. Uh, I was in DC recently and was able to meet with, uh, someone who's very active with this program as well as someone from Waianae who's on the ground here, here from the National Telecommunications and Information Agency. And, uh, we are going to likely have more outreach on this because I don't know how many people, Chair, do you know how many people in Waianae are signed up? I would think a great majority of people in Waianae are eligible for this. So again, it's per month. Either $30 per month discount or $75 per month discount for, um, for those on Hawaiian homelands. And, uh, basically, uh, that's, uh, that's my, my update, Chair. Anyone has any questions?
Councilmember, thank you so much. And please, we echo the condolences of the loss of Darrell. He certainly has played an integral role in our community's efforts to move the community forward. And so we share the sympathies there, uh, with the families and with all of Hawaii as he served our communities well. Mahalo for bringing that up. Uh, members, any questions for the councilmember? Okay, hearing none. Councilmember, I do have a question and it, as you can probably guess, is along the lines of invasive species. As we questioned the administration earlier, asking what kind of programs are offered from the county level, we really need some support in getting attention paid to some of the challenges that are impacting our nurseries and our farm lots today.
It's very, uh, I, I, first of all, I appreciate your leadership on this. It's very difficult because, uh, with regard to the various roles of the various, uh, um, levels of government in the county, it would be with the administration of programs with regard to the implement, uh, and, and by the way, meaning city programs. And how you, um, you implement invasive species management best practices into it like, uh, Director Thielen was saying with regard to the green waste. Uh, I will have to say, uh, the state and federal government, uh, and I see Kristy Martin is on, on as well, and she's been a strong advocate for this. I've been, uh, highly critical. So you have boots on the ground and you know all those guys are good guys, right? And then you have people who are in positions to, uh, um, prioritize invasive species funding because when I was at the Department of Land and Natural Resources, I actually criticized our leadership because I said, oh, is it important? They said, Esther, it is important. And I said, well, how come in the budgetary priority is number 50? Right? So you have to elevate it. I mean, I don't, we know what the funding stream is right now. It should be, I would just guess, it should be 10 to 50 million dollars per annum that's coming out of the Department of Land and Natural Resources, right? And hopefully with regard to a green fee, it could help with that. Now, on the federal government, because I worked at Interior for the US Territories, and let me tell you something, we had tons of money. And, uh, of course, uh, the primary concern was the, uh, control of the brown tree snake on Guam and its prevention from getting into Hawaii. But you're looking at a pot of about, uh, $5 million per annum. And I fought to increase the overall grant programs for invasive species technical assistance. So all I'm just saying is, I, um, I'm with you. Uh, it, so even if the natural funding streams will be coming from the state and federal government, that doesn't mean that we all collectively can do a better job. Yeah? And so I am worried, I saw your update with regard to the, uh, fire, fire ant, and I'm deeply concerned about the coconut rhinoceros beetles beetle. So what I think we should do, separate from the, um, agricultural, uh, Waianae Agricultural Association, because I know they get updates, why don't we specifically, uh, hold a town hall, uh, on invasive species in Waianae, 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 Waianae,
And about what is taking place. So I'm hoping we can work towards that in the upcoming.
Lastly, let me just tell you that when I was in DC, I went to talk to various officials to target a federal infrastructure project. And and I'm I'm just taking simplistically, it is likely going to be happening as early as October. That would involve the White House and EPA and and Department of Transportation and Department of Interior. And while the focus is on the bipartisan infrastructure law and the Inflation Reduction Act, which actually deals with climate, right? Invasive species, of course, is part and parcel of everything with regards to the implementation of these federal projects. So I can assure you that when we have this, it is going to be a multi-pronged agency approach by the federal government in concert with the state of Hawaii and the four counties. So Ed Sniffen from the Department of Transportation was with me. He is now the official federal infrastructure coordinator. He he updated all of the mayors, so they're going to appoint that. So we again have to look at every avenue possible to make make sure invasive species management is part and parcel of of the federal government's manner of how they interface with us on all projects, period. It's not a silo of its own.
Got it.
So anyway, I just want to let you know that that's going to be another opportunity. So thank you, guys.
Mahalo, council member, for your time and service. Thank you so much. Chelsea, I noticed your hand went up and then went down. Did you have something to add, Chelsea Arnott?
Yeah, aloha, everybody. Chelsea Arnott, I work with the Department of Land and Natural Resources and also program support for the Hawaii Invasive Species Council. I just wanted to mahalo the councilwoman and and chair and members for this great conversation on invasive species. And I will, I just sent a message to you, councilwoman, about maybe scheduling a meeting. I did want to say that we were able to secure some funding from Repi for FY23 that is going to be supporting little fire ant control and also koki frog control through the Marine Corps Base Hawaii. So we're really excited about that, and that will be going through the Oahu Invasive Species Committee.
And Chelsea, thank you, Chelsea. So you're next door, so let's talk story. But can I ask, since it's from the Marine Corps Base, would that be specifically targeted for invasive species management in Waianaealo, Kailua and Kaniohe?
Yeah, so the specific areas that we're focusing in on are little fire ant infestations across the Windward side. So looking at Kotlau Poco, the Waianaealo koki infestation, and then also doing invasive plant control, so specifically targeting Myconia over on the Windward side. And that'll be different pockets across Kotlau Poco.
So would you be open to working on a town hall?
Of course, I would love that. I think that would be a great opportunity.
Informational briefing, educational awareness, and letting the community know about the various funding sources for communities also who, many of them are, they're active on the, every month, and they're eligible for funding as well because you need outreach.
Yeah, this is a really great funding opportunity, not just for invasive species. Yes, of course. Appreciate it.
Mahalo, Chelsea. We're gonna have a little bit more conversation after the 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 presentation, so we'll definitely spend some time there. Antikapua, something to add before we move on?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, mahalo everyone for that conversation. I just want to make it known about the CRB or Coconut Rhinoceros beetle that that is well up there on priority list along with the koki frogs as well as the LFA because it endangers our food source and what is culturally important to us as poet, as our Kanaka Maoli. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Thank you for that. Members, we're gonna move on. We have State Senator Chris Lee. Senator Lee? Okay, hearing none. We're gonna ask that the Senator's office take note of the conversations following little fire ants invasive species here in Waianaealo. There has been a request at the Senator's office to start the process of engaging with representatives that make up the conversations that we've been having and to ask that we have a follow-up about it. So definitely want to make sure that the Senator has some response in that kuliana to hold our Department of Ag accountable to the things that are taking place, and we will continue to hold that responsibility for him as a representative of our community as well. I will say Senator Lee recently celebrated via social media the acquisition or the changeover, I should say, of the Kaevi State Park, which extends now up to Makapu. It's more of a name change more than anything else, but there are some really important key critical bills that went into into law and will be working on into law very soon soon to provide resources and the necessary protections, as they shared in perpetuity for the community. So I do want to commend all of the community members that have continued to be good stewards, both in the Aina but also in the offices of our representatives and elected officials, to our neighboring neighborhood boards in Hawaii Kai, many of the organizations and grassroots efforts that have been leading up to this for over 50 years to get to a point of this kind of preservation. It is a definite win for all of us, and it's a learning opportunity for all of us as well. So we look forward to continuing to steward our spaces and public areas, and we want to continue to strengthen other relationships with our leaderships through that. So mahalo Senator Lee for, you know, initiating some of those conversations and carrying them forward. Members, we're gonna move on. State Representative Lisa Martin's office. I do see Makilei this evening. Aloha Nui Akako.
Aloha Nui Akako. I just want to provide some updates. And with the Kaevi Coast, there was also signing in SB 1552 for the LFA and specifically to work with Hawaii Ant Labs. So that is exciting. That's moving in. And hopefully, next one, we can get the CRBs under that belt as well. So take a look out. We'll push that somewhere when we need more testimony. So please pass that along. Rep. Martin did meet with Colonel Bevan, and she appreciates the continued commitment to move on as a part of the build and not yet built part of the fence moving towards the Kauha, the Lani Kai side down below. And then she was concerned the remaining fence still had long post-stops meant for the barbed wire, so they'll follow up with that. And then they indicated that they were already ordered, but they can be cut. And then she also learned that there's no current budget to selectively paint sections of the fence, and she's gonna, they're gonna work to secure funding for that. We do want to appreciate a mahalo to Antikapua, Maderos, Lori Tchiki, and Jana Orahugo for coming to the Child Welfare Services Bill Signing for Malama Ohana Working Group, SB 295. So we got to sign that in as well as the HB 948, the Youth Mobile Crisis Outreach. So mahalo Nui for making that possible, and those, the Malama Ohana especially, came out of the Ariokalua case that affected the community so much. So mahalo everyone for your testimony and for your support. We also want to follow up with some updates. So there's two free Narcan available, so that is important. Going to be offered through the Office of Health and Harm Reduction. So I'm gonna put that link into the chat in a bit. Also, appliance trade-ups. There's a second round that's gonna include washer-dryers. I'm gonna put the link for the Napono, Nona Ohana link. It should be updated through there, and then the signups can roll in. If you don't already receive emails from Rep. Martin's E-News, please sign up. That's how we will get these links out to the community. So please, 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 if you can, sign up for email. And if not, ask your neighbor or your Ohana, and they can get you signed up as well. We'll also be including Hawaii Energy Tax Rebates and Credit Information, a link as well. And if you ever have any questions, concerns, manao, please continue to email Rep. Martin's email, and we will be able to address all of your concerns that way. We appreciate everyone for keeping an eye out on the ground for things, and we need you folks to keep us up to date as much as we can help you keep up to date in that regard. But this is Makilei. Mahalo Nui, and have a great evening. And I can take any questions for Rep. Martin.
Mahalo, Makilei, for being here as well as for your service to our community. Members, any questions for the Office of Representative Martin? Okay, I'm seeing none. Makilei, as you are well aware, the conversations surrounding the eradication of LFA has been on the agenda for many people. We have tagged in several people, including your office. My question to you, and you can take this back to the representative, is now what? Now that you folks are aware of it, now what? What is the state gonna do? What is the state representative gonna do on behalf of our community and those that are impacted now, including our farmers? What are you gonna do about LFA? And how are we gonna progress that conversation? And so I know we're very early in the early stages of this, but to me, this is the most critical stages. This is whether or not the credibility of our people are going to be understood, right? And if they're gonna be tested. And so we really strongly urge the Office of the Representative to push the boundary a little bit more with HDOA, to start inquiries of the processes that are currently in place that are or may be needing improvement. We certainly look forward to some of the information that was being shared in regards to some of the amendments made to rules and changes that might be needing attention from the governor's office, but it's going to need the support of our representatives to have the courage to fight for these things. And so I know that you will have the opportunity to engage with her. I know she's traveling right now, but please know that this community's efforts to protect agriculture in Waianaealo as well as the livelihood of our community is a priority. And so however we may be of service, we strongly recommend that the office look out to us. And we also ask you to challenge the Senator's office. We're going to need a collective and collaborative approach to finding out the answers that are necessary to get the resources in to support these efforts. And we've had these conversations for years now in very small buckets, right? In small ways, we've kind of banded together. I think now is the time to hulihiya all of those things, that we need to get them understood, relooked at, reviewed, and addressed. And so please share that with her, and that we we need her to challenge these boundaries a little bit more. It's gonna be uncomfortable, and so what? It's not gonna be as uncomfortable as getting bit or swarmed by LFA, so we have to do it together. Lulu, I'll get right to your comment in just a second. The other thing was in regards to the Bellows Air Force Fence, the Marine Corps Base Fence. While I appreciate and applaud the representative's initiative to go out and engage with the commander of Marine Corps Base Hawaii, I was a little disappointed that the invitation didn't go out to us as well. We were a part of those conversations from early start. In fact, bringing it up to the community was a part of our kuliana. And so maybe the logistics just weren't there in time for us to be invited and offered an invitation to meet at that particular space. But I would expect that to happen in the near future. I think it's imperative that we also share, manao, that maybe the representative may not be able to articulate on our behalf in ways that we can. And so just to share that concern that, you know, we wish to be a part of those discussions as well, as it's gonna take our community also, because that fence line sits on our side. It doesn't sit on Kailua's side, right? So we're gonna live with that fence line, which means we should be a part of those conversations in the long term. Yeah. But in any case, mahalo, as always, you have my number. If there's anything that I was missing from the conversation, please let me know, and thank you so much for your service. Lulu, your question for the representative's office?
Yeah, so funding that was obtained for the runout of the bill and that little fire ant. What happens now? Like, I know it just got passed with the funding. What happens? What happens now? Sorry, my internet's quirky. Sorry about that.
Yeah, Lulu, you're kind of breaking in and out. So Makilei, what I got from her was what happens now that the funding was signed in? What do we expect to see from that funding, from that bill that was initiated by the representative?
Got it. So my my understanding for that, the funding's then be released. They are gonna be working with the Hawaii Ant Labs, but I can get more information and follow up and provide follow-up on that for you on if there's any particular dates and what that looks like moving forward.
Perfect. Lulu, does that answer your question? You can put it in the chat. Okay. Thank you, Lulu. Makilei, on that same note, though, you know, I think moving forward, what we have to sign into these bills is the connectivity to HDOA. I think this bill is great to support the ant lab and focusing on their resources, but how does it challenge and how do we link in the kuliana of HDOA? Maybe we can think about that in any future to make sure that those who hold kuliana to these things are addressed in those same bills. Mahalo so much for your time. Appreciate it. Okay, gang, we're moving on. The Office of Governor Josh Green are not available this evening. They did send a report. I'm gonna read it very briefly. The monthly newsletters are available. They have several links, which I'll add into the chat very shortly. Homeowners Assistance Fund Program expanding. The program is expanding mortgage assistance to homeowners who are experiencing financial hardship due to COVID, starting in 2021, and serving homeowners with the greatest needs. Maximum assistance per household has been increased to 60,000. Homeowners who do not have or do not have to be delinquent to qualify reverse mortgage homeowners are now eligible. Availability on Oahu, Kauai, and Hawaii counties. To find out more, there is a website, Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation Homeowner Assistance Fund. The Governor Green signed in key bills into law, new gun safety laws to protect Hawaii's people, Act 52 and 53, action to improve the health of Hawaii's youth, Act 62, and taking steps to protect the environment, Act 72. There were questions from our May meeting that they have provided resource and answers to. What resources can the Executive Office on on aging? Point us to for resources for kopuna who remain at home and are cared for by their family. For resources and information available to seniors, please call the City and County of Honolulu Elderly Office at 808-768-7700 or 808-633-2372. With regards to Bill 19 at the county, 2023, and Bill 38, 2021, there seems to be conflicting information with regard to the city and the state. At what point will the state align with the city on this matter? Thirty-five percent of Wiki permits come out of Waianaealo. The Waianaealo Neighborhood Board would like to know what the state does in line with county ordinance, requesting someone from DLNR present to the board or committee on the process and take community feedback on it. How can the community and board be informed about the Wiki permits being assigned out by day and who is gonna enforce them as well? That was a question posed, a response from the administration. The Wiki permits are administered by the Land Division of the Department of Land and Natural Resources, and beaches fronting state parks were removed from the Wiki permit availability. Permitting permitted areas fronting county beaches are below the shoreline, so most times the beach lies outside of a state or city park. The city could write to the DLNR chairperson requesting the removal of Waianaealo beach sites from the Wiki permit systems, or could alternately request the beaches be set aside to the city under Governor's Executive Order EO. The effect of an EO set aside to the city would be to remove the beaches from the Wiki permit systems and make them subject to city rules and regulations. Otherwise, city restrictions, even those passed by ordinances, do not necessarily apply on state lands. If there are further questions, call the DLNR Land Division, 808-587-0419. Lastly, DLNR's Division of Conservation and Resource Enforcement, Doke, recently had a graduating class of DLNR officers. Please advise on how this class is being distributed. The Office Branch of Doke picked up 14 additional officers that are still in the field training and not yet been assigned to districts yet. DLNR understands and has received the community's concern and will keep the Waianaealo Neighborhood Board updated. This was the update from the Office of the Governor, Josh Green. If there's any questions, put them in the chat or contact their office, and please let us know how we may be of service. So I'll put some of that information into the chat at a later time, and we'll go from there. So that is the update there. Any questions for the governor? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the Congresswoman's office, Jill Takuta's office. I think we have a representative this evening. Nicole, thank you so much for being here, as well as your patience. I hope you have a pen and are ready to take notes. But we look forward to your presentation, miss. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I'm just gonna read a quick update from the office, and then I'll be able to take all your questions back. I'm stepping in for the person who was supposed to be here but couldn't make it tonight. So I probably won't have the answers that you need, but I will definitely get up to the the people who need to to hear the questions. So as far as the update, Representative Takuta led a group of Biden administration officials in a visit to Molokai to meet with residents of Kalapapa and tour healthcare facilities. They also participated in a food distribution in Eba Beach, which provides meal kits, including local produce to families with children in rural communities. Rep. Takuta held a West Side Town Hall on July 8, 2023. More town halls will be occurring across the state in the coming months. Rep. Takuta partnered with Rep. Diana Harshberger of Tennessee to launch the Congressional Bipartisan Rural Health Caucus to address issues relating to access to healthcare and mental health services for those living in rural areas. Rep. Takuta has recently introduced the Grow Your Own Food Act to expand the micro grants for food security programs with a goal of increasing locally grown food in food insecure communities. The new installment of Jill on the Job Newsletter is up on the website as of June 7. And our Military Academy nominations portal is now open on the website, and you can find all the frequently asked questions and information and applications all on there. And if anyone needs any help with federal government agencies, please feel free to contact our office, or faster yet, you can go online and fill out the Privacy Release Form. It comes directly to us, and we can begin helping you. And I'll go ahead and put into the chat all the ways to get in touch with our office and to find newsletters and social media and all the things, and then you can hit me with all your questions.
Well, we certainly appreciate you for stepping in this evening on behalf of the Congresswoman's office. Certainly, you've heard quite a bit of conversations surrounding invasive species, and so I won't beat around the bush. The Congresswoman did respond to an email inquiry about what she can do to co-cure the efforts here at the state level. And so we really want to reemphasize how important it is that we look at the processes from a federal level as well. And so we really want to ask the Congresswoman to take a look at what she can do on the state level to encourage our state-elected officials, including members that's in her own body at the federal level, to inquire, what are we doing about these things? It's one thing to have and talk about all these funding sources, but but what? What are we doing about it? And so while it's on, you know, the agenda of the community tonight, this has been an ongoing battle, and so it feels like sometimes we're losing those battles because these things continue to pop up, which means in my mind, we're not changing anything. So how do we address them, and what can the Congresswoman bring to the community and to our district with regards to resources, understanding, training, development, whatever, that we can learn from and collaborate on? And so that's one of the biggest things that I would like to ask you take back to the representative this evening. In addition to that, we had engaged in some conversations with with the previous congressman's office surrounding the Bellows lease and Marine Corps Base in Waianaealo. We want to make sure that that conversation has not gone on to deaf ears and that the representative is prepared to step into those discussions as we talk about surplus lands here in Waianaealo and what we can do to integrate those understandings with the military and the Department of Defense here as their their time really starts to to dwindle here in Waianaealo. And so while, you know, while she's fairly new into the job, I do want to make sure that we have those discussions available for her response, and hopefully, we can have a town hall to meet and greet and participate with her as well. I know she's traveling right now based on her email, but these are very important conversations, and she holds a very important seat for this community. And so we really look forward to engaging with your office. I appreciate any connection into information you can put into the chat so that we can stay connected and definitely want to ensure that we can participate in some really lengthy but focused conversations moving forward.
Yeah, definitely. I'm sitting here in Hilo in my house, and I don't know if you can hear them, but the koki are all around. So I definitely understand.
Yep, and we don't want koki in our community, so keep them over there and then get rid of them on your side. But any members, any questions for the Office of the Congresswoman? Antikapua?
Mahalo, Nicole, for coming to work with our Waianaealo Neighborhood Board. It was a nice surprise to see you here. I just want to add to that conversation that the state of Hawaii has a kuliana, right? America has a kuliana to ask Kanaka Maoli to care for these lands until such time that we are able to resume our our own Hawaiian kingdom government. So we ask that you be taking an active role in protecting those lands, which hasn't happened for a long time. And now we are here where many of our resources are in danger. And so to me, to show good stewardship, then you need to take an active role in in stewarding these things. And invasive species definitely high on the priority list as well as our water source, you know, and the Red Hill issue, and those things that definitely decrease the quality of our life here and on our Aina aloha. So those are the things that I'm looking forward to working with you and your office. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Antikapua. Thank you. We have Auntie Mabel.
Wanted to kind of address the bases, the military bases, the use of state land, especially ceded land. And, you know, it's never a fair market value. When they utilize the property, they charge $1. And so those revenues go into, you know, helping us build more homes underneath the department. So somehow, it has to have, it has to be addressed that the dollar for a lease is ridiculous and that we should, they should be paying, you know, at least equitable costs for the usage of of Hawaiian lands and not the dollar, because that's ridiculous. So as far as us native Hawaiian people, we we believe that has to be fair, fair value. Lot of times, they utilize all of the native Hawaiian lands for dollar, which is ridiculous. So please tell them, start paying so that we in Hawaii can, us native Hawaiians can have a better life. You know, the Hawaiian homestead list is 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 absolutely, you know, criminal. And where you gonna pay? You know, so these these lands that we have, they are precious. And yet, that money that is charged is ridiculous. And those money is supposed to help us in our rehabilitation and help us in restoration? Come on, something's wrong here. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Mahalo, Auntie Mabel. Thank you for bringing that up. A very important conversation that we hope Representative Takuta will take to heart and have the courage to question. So mahalo Nui for that. Any other members' questions for the Office of Congresswoman Jill Takuta? Okay, I'm seeing none. Nicole, again, mahalo Nui for your time and for your patience in hanging out with us until 9:15. Thank you so much. If you, of course, are not busy, I would encourage you to stay on for the conversations surrounding LFA as the members of the board and the public, as well as those here, kind of dig into the next step. So mahalo Nui again for your time. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Members, 9:13. As mentioned earlier, we had to defer some of our board actions due to a lack of quorum. And that's gonna continue in for number eight in relationship to board actions following the speed calming measures on Hehe Manu Street, as well as the response action to CRB and LFA, Coconut Rhinoceros beetle and little fire ants. We still lack quorum to be able to take board action on these items. However, we can have discussion on them. And so I want to open up the floor for discussion on the speed calming measures on Hehe Manu Street. I want to recognize members of our community, Auntie Jill and, oh, shucks. Ted, help me out. Her name will come to me, but we have two members of our community that really stepped up. They are members that live along Hehe Manu, and they took it upon themselves per the recommendation of the Office of the Representative Martin to go out and to survey their community members to look at, you know, what kinds of of impacts could be felt particularly surrounding a speed mitigation effort. And so I'm gonna just read that information to us. Sorry, Auntie Rosie. There you go, Auntie Rosie and Auntie Jill. So a conducted survey was conducted amongst residents and businesses in the area of Hehe Manu Street, Puolima Street, and Place, Mokulama Street. Uh so a conducted survey was uh conducted amongst residents and businesses in the area of Hehe Manu Street, Paulima Street and Place, Mokulama Street, regarding the installment of speed humps or similar detractors to curb speeding. To date, six businesses are in favor of the proposal. Seventy-three individuals were in favor and three were not. As suggested by the Honorable Office of the Lisa Martin, I would like to submit this completed survey to the Waianalo Neighborhood Board Transportation Committee, which can then make a proposal to the Waianalo Neighborhood Board at its next meeting. Please advise on how to go about this task. Your expedited response will be greatly appreciated. Sent by Rosalie Lenchanko, June thirtieth. So that's why that item was uh agendized this evening. It was our hope that we could push it out of the board in a more formal manner. But it does take to note that um that we, you know, have uh done what was asked of us as a community and that it is represented through the works of Auntie Rosie and Auntie Jill and the Transportation Committee uh to work on starting to implement speed curbing measures along Hehe Manu Street. So Mahile, I I know you're still there. Mahalo for taking note on that. When the board does have an opportunity to send a more formalized um request, we will do so. But please know that the work has been done as reported. Um so if there's any way that we could start those conversations, we would certainly welcome it. Members, we're in discussion. Is there any other thoughts, questions, comments, or concerns? Or Ted, Chair of the Transportation Committee, anything to add?
I just think that uh this is what uh was requested and that's what we've done. We really want to thank the two ladies for taking care of that. Uh it does bring up an interesting point. Um it 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 indicates to me that community activism is going to be essential to take care of all these kind of measures. If we're going to have to go out and do the 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 base groundwork of determining interest in the community and determining opposition. Uh that's uh a message for all of our activities, I think. So it is once again hats off to the two ladies and uh uh thanks very much for doing that.
Mahalo, any other discussion? Antikapua?
Um yes, obviously by Auntie Rosie's report, they have a majority of support from that community that it directly affects um and so it's hope, I'm hopeful that it will uh be accomplished. Um what what we need to work on too is the timeline, like will we have to wait another twenty years? As we have for our um gym and all those other things that we request? Or will it get done in a timely manner so no one else is endangered um traveling those those roads? Thank you.
Mahalenui, thank you so much. Any other comments? Okay, again, we are unable to take official board ma- um uh action this evening due to a lack of quorum. So we're going to go ahead and defer this item to the next meeting, at which point we hope to facilitate a conversation and action on that. Uh that brings us up to the next uh board action that we will have discussion on. And this is a response to uh coconut rhinoceros beetle and little fire ants. I want to acknowledge uh our Chair of Hawaiian Resources, uh Natural Resources and Hawaiian Affairs, Antikapua uh and her committee for taking it upon themselves to really try and understand this problem um and for creating opportunities for the community to learn a little bit more. It is my hope that we continue to create opportunities of education uh that expand even beyond the walls of the Neighborhood Board, but is inclusive of the members of our agriculture community and and farther reach. So Antikapua, any thoughts on that before we move into discussion?
Um I like the idea of having a town hall where we could uh bring in all um all um team players and people that have a kuliana or are also directly affected um by all of this, which would be our entire community. Um I, we will definitely work on um providing more open forum opportunities at our committee. And I will add it to the agenda so that we can discuss that. How how can we, even if we have to do like Auntie Rosie and did where we go door to door to um talk to people? Then that's what we have to do. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Members, we're in discussion. Is there any thoughts, comments on this particular topic that we want to go over? We do have, and and I don't know if they want to be pointed out, but we do have members uh of various backgrounds that are here representing uh resources that have worked very diligently with our community in the last week or so, as well as prior to that um some going back years to help us advocate better. And so I do want to give them an opportunity to share uh a little bit about what they may want to share. It was not the intention to have them present, but due to the fact that we are not able to take action this evening, I will open up that opportunity for them if they have anything that they'd like to share on their behalf. So uh any of you that are here for the conversation on on invasive species, uh if any of you want to share anything, please go ahead and raise your hand and we'll get that started. Yeah, we'll get started with Kristi Martin and maybe this is the time Chelsea maybe for a re- return of those conversations. Perfect, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Kristi, thank you for being here.
Aloha, mahalo for this discussion. I really enjoyed it. Uh I'm Kristi Martin with the coordinating group on alien pest species, C-Gaps. Um you should have never really heard us. We just try and get the agencies and non or non-governmental organizations to work together to fill the gaps uh that we see on invasive species prevention and response. I put into the chat the thing that I wanted to um share with everyone. And that is, you know, we don't speak for the Department of Agriculture, but I did want to point out that the department has not had clear rules on stopping the movement of pests like little fire ants when they're um for example, on a property or in a nursery uh or coconut rhinoceros beetle when they're in green waste. Uh they have initiated rulemaking and it's partway through that process to clarify that they do have the authority. And that uh rule made it through the Small Business Regulatory Review Board in in May. And so it's partway through the process, the next step is that the governor has to approve the rules. The draft rule is going to public hearing. And so if you are interested in making sure these move forward, uh you can encourage governor to sign and approve taking those to the public. The Department of Agriculture would then need to schedule those um public meetings in each county. Uh and they are, I think they their tendency has been to hold physical meetings uh with the possibility to video conference and if you would like to testify. Uh so that is the opportunity to encourage them to to clarify their rules that yes, they actually have the authority and the responsibility to stop the pests when they know about it um before it spreads across our Aina. So just wanted to share that with you. Mahalo.
I think you were muted, Chair.
Thank you. Thanks, Chelsea. Um um before we move on, I just wanted to ask if anyone had any questions for Kristi and what she just recently shared. Antikapua?
Yes, so um my understanding is that the um Department of Agriculture is now trying to get some rules put in place and then have the governor sign it. Does that call for community input? Is that what you, I I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part.
Sorry, Kristi, can you unmute?
Oh, got it again.
Me too.
Happens to everybody. Okay, mahalo. Um yeah, the rulemaking process has like eighteen different steps. Uh so where we are now is that the rule was introduced at the Board of Agriculture. It's a draft rule. The board said, yes, you can go into rulemaking. Uh and then it had to go to Small Business Regulatory Review Board to see whether or not it'll have significant impacts on small business and if those can be mitigated. Um that passed by that committee, which was a public meeting um with no opposition. So they um approved that. And then it has to go to the governor for his approval to go to public meeting. That's where we are now. So just because he signs it doesn't mean that the rule is enacted. It means that everybody, all of us across the state, get a chance to chime in on those draft rules. And it's important that if you do support it, that you say so. And I'll just be fair, if you oppose it, uh that you say so. So it is our chance to be um to take part in in civics.
Awesome, that that was my concern, that um the rules that are put in place are rules that can be enforced and are helpful to end invasive species. And that um business money making does not come before um is not put as a priority ahead of the protection of our lands. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Kristi, thank you for sharing. We're going to move over to Chelsea. Chelsea, if you can just explain or reiterate where you're where you're coming from this evening as far as your department? And then we look forward to anything you have to share. Thank you.
Yeah, mahalo for the opportunity. Um so uh again, my name's Chelsea Arnott. I work with the Department of Land and Natural Resources, but I primarily focus on program support for our Hawaiian invasive species council. Um if you're not familiar with the council, it's actually comprised of six state departments. Um it includes uh the Hawaii Department of Agriculture, Land and Natural Resources, Department of Health, Transportation, Business Economic Development, and University of Hawaii. So those state departments that have some jurisdiction in invasive species prevention and management. And it's really this coordinating body because like you've been doing this entire time, Chair, invasive species hit on every single topic on this agenda item and every single sector in all of our communities. Um so it's really this coordinating body to work on policy, prevention, and management of invasive species here in Hawaii. Um so we work alongside of our partner organizations like Kristi Martin and the coordinating group on alien pest species. We also help distribute state funds to support invasive species projects and programs across the state. Um we provide um a pretty good chunk of the operating costs for our island invasive species committees and the Hawaii Ant Lab. Um the funding that is coming through SB one five five two to support Hawaii Ant Lab will go through our Hawaiian invasive species council to support the Hawaii Ant Lab. And I just want to say that's supporting about seventy-five percent of their program. Um so when you're saying what happens with that funding? Well, it's going to support those researchers and the technical staff that is really out there on the ground um finding those tools and techniques to manage little fire ant and then implementing those. And also doing outreach with a lot of uh the agricultural community, especially on Hawaii Island, where they're really impacted by little fire ant. Um and on top of, you know, Kristi makes a a really great point that we really have struggled with clarity on authority to stop this movement of pests inter and intra-island. And that's what this rule can do, but we also need more funding. Um we've seen Maui invasive species committee pretty much on the brink of eradicating little fire ant from this huge valley in New Hiku um by the use of using this aerial deployment of it's basically an ant birth control. And they had a huge infestation of little fire ant. And now they're down to just a few vials where they're detecting little fire ant. And it stretched across the whole valley. And they get a really good amount of support from the state, but also from the county. Um so we've seen what can happen when we have the funding to support that. And on top of that, having those rules that can help us manage uh the movement of of pathways that can carry pests throughout, not just inter-island but intra-island. So mahalo for the opportunity. I've really appreciated the entire conversation that's been here today and for all of you in the community.
Chelsea, are you open to taking questions?
Of course.
Can you ask, uh can you answer me this? The 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 funding that's going to go to Ant Lab, what kind of resource are we talking about that the Ant Lab has? Like what is their, what is their staffing?
Their staffing um is, maybe Chris Rollick could speak to this. So he's our representative here from the Hawaii Ant Lab. I think it's about eleven staff total and there's probably two and a half uh technicians specifically for Oahu. So that's a a pretty small amount of people to manage the the amount of infestations that are currently occurring on Oahu.
Okay.
Right, so um this is Chris Rollick with Hawaii Ant. Um um yeah, we have one full-time staff and one half-time staff person. Um and then me, um and I'm I'm the program coordinator over here. So um you know, we we really need to um look to what has been accomplished over on Maui. And we need uh much more significant staff uh on Oahu in order to uh tackle uh what we're dealing with right now.
Sure. Thank you, Chris, for that response. Chelsea, a follow-up on HISC, when is the HISC meetings for the public interface?
So we will have our next meeting on August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. These are public meetings, um so we have to abide by sunshine laws. Um if you're not, I'll put the um our listserv in the the chat here. So if you're not on our listserv, please sign up. It's just easy email chimp and that's how all our announcement goes up, go out. And I think Chair, you're you're on that listserv, so feel free to forward that out to your board and your community if you're interested. Um the primary goal of the council meeting on August twenty-third is allocating our FY twenty-four appropriation. Um so we do get around five million every year to support invasive species um programs and projects across the state. It's a competitive process and we evaluate those applications that come through and then we present those to our council um for approval and then to disperse the funding. But like Councilwoman uh Kiina said, you know, that is just peanuts compared to the need, like ten to fifty million. I was like, yeah, right on. That would be amazing. We could do so much with more funding. Um but primarily that council meeting is dedicated to um approval of our FY twenty-four budget, but there's always opportunity to provide public comment and testimony.
Okay, in addition to that meeting, what else can we as a community and neighborhood do to assist HISC in their kuliana to our community and our our islands essentially?
I mean, I think you're doing it right here by having these conversations and just showing uh how invasive species impact everything in your communities and asking for each member on the agenda to be accountable on what they're doing to help manage and prevent invasive species, whether it's on um the Marine Corps Base or on at a nursery. So I think what you're doing is great and bringing that to our legislative officials and just saying this is a priority in our community. Um because Waianalo unfortunately is seeing a lot of these infestations, the koki, the coconut rhinoceros beetle and little fire ant. And we're seeing these pop up across Oahu. And we're really at this tipping point of some of these species where we might not be able to come back from them if we don't really put a significant effort into it.
Okay, I do have some other questions, but I do know this, we have some hands up, so I'm going to give them an opportunity. We have Mr. David Laeha, followed by Ted Ralston, followed by Kopo Mederos.
Yes, hi, David Laeha from the Kailua Neighborhood Board. Uh been listening in on the conversation, was invited to participate uh from very concerned residents uh in the Kahulu um Kahalu area. And um and so I just want to lend out, stick my hand out for support um uh within the Kailua District area and um uh definitely want to address the these invasive species issues, uh particularly the CRV and the little fire ants. Um eh I'm not aware of any specific uh concerns in Kailua. Uh it hasn't hit our agenda at all. Um but it is something of concern for our community and we want to do everything we can to support it. I do want to also add that I did sort of hear from uh Maisy Hirono's team that there is funding available under the Environmental Protection Agency, not specifically for this uh project, but um uh for some other projects that I'm working on. And um I would like, I would recommend Chelsea maybe to keep an eye open for uh funding that might address invasive species under the Environmental Protection Agency Group. Um so I just wanted to share the that uh information with the group. Um so I just wanted to share the that uh information with the group and uh wish all of you uh tremendous uh uh success on on your efforts. So thanks, everybody.
Mahalo, Mr. Laeha. We strongly support obviously the efforts to collaborate on these things. So if you uh aren't planning to, we'd ask that you take this back to your neighborhood board as well. Um it is my intention to connect with the neighborhood board chairs and just inform them of our discussion this evening uh and request that they pay some due diligence to this conversation and effort. So if you being here uh allows that, then please do take that, and and we stand ready to kokua a collective effort to charge against this particular species. So mahalo for being here, Mr. Laeha. Ted Ralston, followed by Capua Mederos, followed by John Ripun.
Uh two questions. Uh one regarding the additional funding potentially available at the federal level. Uh Department of Interior, has anybody researched that or looked into what's available from uh the Bureau of Land Management or any one of those organizations that, you know, who knows what they have set aside as uh as opportunities? Um I don't know, but I'm just wondering because that's their kuliana. The second question is, uh in terms of accountability, we're attempting to hold all of our public officials accountable, but how about ourselves? Is there a role for volunteers in the community? The neighborhood boards organized by by subsets of the community. So is there something we can establish in terms of our own uh responsibility and our own actions that we as non-professionals in the pest extermination business can maybe do uh to help you who are the professionals?
Hey, mahalo for that question, Ted. I I'll go ahead and give Chelsea an opportunity to to respond to that. Chelsea?
Yeah, mahalo so much, and I I can answer the first question, and then maybe I'll pass it to Erin with the Waikiki Invasive Species Committee or Chris to answer um the second part of that question. So um we do, Kristi and myself, um who you heard from earlier, works really closely uh with with the federal government, um our congressional delegates, and brief them pretty regularly on our invasive species priorities. Um we have a really great working relationship with uh the Department of Interior's invasive species coordinator. Um and there's a lot of new initiatives coming out that are support, that give funding to support invasive species work across the state um across the nation. So we're really excited and pretty integrated in those conversations. And and Kristi Martin is also um an appointee to the Invasive Species Advisory Committee, um which serves on a a a national level, but she's our our Hawaii representative in those national conversations. Um so we have a pretty uh good idea, but always open if you hear for other about other funding opportunities. I mean, we're we're ready to write applications and grants and always looking for additional ways to fund invasive species work.
Mahalo. Erin, you wanna take a stab at the second question?
Yeah, thank you. Erin Bishop here with the Oahu Invasive Species Committee. Um I'm the outreach coordinator. And as far as getting the community involved for personal accountability and what role they can play in this is we are promoting that everyone do um an ant collection sample and submit that for identification. We are providing free kits to do this, so you can go to stoptheant.org. We will mail you a kit. It's everything that you need, a self-addressed stamped envelope. You collect whatever ants you have on your property and then mail them in for identification. We have to be able to look at ants under a microscope to determine what the species is. And that is how we are finding these infestations across the island, and the earlier that we can find them, the easier they are to eradicate. And then um if we can get this town hall meeting, OSK can be there, and we can be available to do ant identification on the spot. Um so this is something you can share with your neighbors um to get those kits. And then our office is located in Kailua, right behind Castle Hospital. So you can contact us if you wanna come down that same day. We can do an ant ID on the spot, Monday through Friday, seven AM to three thirty PM. I'll put um contact information in the chat.
Is it reasonable to consider distributing those uh kits through the school systems?
Yes, um that's another program that we do have. We work with schoolchildren to do an LFA activity. It's called Huikai LFA. And they have the, we have the kids go home and collect the ants that they have at their house, and then we come back and do a lab portion um with the kids. So we can do that. We can provide those. Um and if you have any other locations in Waianalo that you know would be willing to pass out these kits, we can have them um just a hundred kits sitting on a box on top of a counter somewhere.
Uh Ted, to answer your question from our side, you can expect that we're going to be taking personal accountability in this, yes. We are going to be walking and meeting our neighbors and talking to our neighbors, particularly in the ag world, so we look forward to that coming up. Uh Antika Pua, followed by Mr. Ripun.
Yes, um I'm sorry, I just I just remember, call him like, I um after hearing Chelsea talk about how all of these different entities have been working on um invasive species for how, I'm not sure how many years. I didn't hear that part, but um I'm just um assuming that it's been for a while now. And we're not making that much headway because now we have islands that are at the point of no return. So hopefully after, you know, I mean, hopefully that we can push it. Maybe we're gonna be in here in Waianalo the ones to push it, to make it statewide, but I I really feel like if you've been working on it for years and you're not getting, making much headway, then like Kimianna said, something needs to change about that. Mahalo.
Hey, mahalo for your thought. Mr. Ripun, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Aloha. Um can you hear me okay?
We can. Please, go ahead.
But I'm uh serving the Harvard Board. This topic has come up on our board as well. Um Kimiuna, I cannot thank you enough for for focusing every aspect of this neighborhood board meeting, your neighborhood board meeting on on invasives, especially little fire ants and so on. Um it's very frightening. My brothers and I have been farming Waianali since the seventies, and and we are very worried about, you know, there's infestation in Ko'oloa, Hakipu, Ahu Imanu. Um so so this town hall, this uh this large gathering, this, you know, this tonight's meeting is pretty much that. But something, maybe maybe it needs to be held at Winter Community College, maybe it could be held at Ko'olau uh golf course, their facilities. But it needs to be a big deal. What I'm hearing tonight is is exactly what my biggest fear is, is that this comes down to short staffing, um lack of funding, and that is appalling to me. Um what Chelsea brought up of the the various uh entities that are um you know, in a consortium with one another. I don't know if I heard the Department of Business Economic Development and Tourism, all of which will be affected. I didn't hear the Agribusiness Development Corporation, which has money. Um and we haven't even touched on uh you know, Castle Foundation, private foundations. Um this is where the money needs to go, and it and because every aspect of our lives is gonna be affected by this. So my brother lives in Pahoa on a big island and and um, you know, I, yeah, his his stories have been terrorizing us, Rapunzana Oahu, for years about the the impact. Um so yeah, just thank you so much for bringing this to light, um partner. Um we're gonna be seeing you at our neighborhood board meeting, but if if this, if this Waianalo Neighborhood Board meeting, uh the recording of it could be sent around to the other neighborhood boards, um all the members, and have them sit down and listen to the discussion that's taken place this evening. It's been very thorough. Kimiuna, thank you, and 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 Kapua, thank you, folks, for everything you guys have done this evening. Much appreciated. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Uncle John. I I didn't have a chance to look at your guys' agenda for this month, but if you guys do have quorum and are able to pass some kind of action on LFA, we would kindly support it. Um so I I'm hoping that I can be available to a tenure folks' meeting to just share a little bit about what we've talked about tonight with the intent of getting some action done. And if Ko'olau Poco leads that, so be it. Um right now, I feel like we have within our reason um all that's necessary to take action. And so, yeah, we'll be in touch, Uncle John.
Yeah, we'll we'll have a quorum. I'm pretty certain of that. So if that's one way to move forward, any motion, we get it from whichever end of Ko'olau Poco, let's get it started.
Perfect. Mahalo. All right, members, we're at nine forty-four. I do want us to conclude by ten o'clock. So Chelsea, anything else you wanna add? And if not, Erin Bishop or Chris from Ant Lab. I even see Jamie here. I think Jamie, are you here with um OSK as well? Yeah. So we'll just pass it on to the next if there's anyone else. Okay, hearing and seeing no hands up, I'm gonna assume that for tonight, that concludes the conversations there. Um as always, I wanna mahalo, you know, each and everyone that has participated in it. It's going to take a community effort. Um for our representatives that are still listening in, Makiile, Gloria, Nicole, Chelsea folks dropped a lot of EK about how we can get ahead of this. I would really strongly encourage that we reach out to the County of Maui to see what their processes were like, what funding sources were like, learn from them, that we can push this forward. Uh and then additional funding sources, additional attention. It is our intention here to to challenge our elected officials to stand up to these things and and fight for the communities that will be impacted. Make no mind about it, gang. It's gonna impact every single person in Hawaii. This is not Waianalo-centric. It's not agricultural-centric. It is everybody, beaches, parks, all of that. And so the livelihoods that we talk about here in Hawaii that is rich in agriculture and farming, it will, it will suffer. It may not be destroyed, but it will suffer. And so we have to take a greater stance, and we have to challenge the boundaries a little bit more. Uh we look forward to continuing the conversations at our next meeting, uh and Uncle John and any members that are here present, including um where did he go? Mr. Laeha, if there's any way that we can kokua, please let us know, because it is important that we start giving the attention due to these processes. So seeing no other hands up, I'm gonna ask that we move on, and mahalo, everybody, for your time and follow-up. Thank you, guys, very, very, very much. Um with that being said, members, we are at meeting announcements, uh Neighborhood Commission Office announcements. Partner, do you have any Neighborhood Commission Office announcements for us this evening?
Yeah, I do. Um real quick, for those board members who have not gotten me um your paperwork, which is your contact info form, sunshine law verification form, and oath of office form, which reminds me, we have to do that. Shoot, um so busy tonight. Um but yeah, if you guys can give me your forms um as soon as possible, that would be awesome. I did send out an email to everyone with those forms attached in the email. If if by any chance you you need those um still yet, let me know, and I can forward those out. Um for anybody interested in filling a vacancy as as Chair Kimiuna said, um please feel free to send me a copy of either your Hawaii driver's license, state ID, or your most recent um utility bills, so like your water bill or your electric bill, so that I can vet your address prior to the next meeting. That way, when it comes to the filling of vacancies on the agenda, and we have quorum next time, it'll make it, it'll make the process that much faster um and that much easier. Um and then the last thing, and uh Uncle John, I'll be mentioning this uh for you guys on Wednesday. Um but the NCO has started um using Google Drive for all of the boards. So any reports, any flyers, any correspondence essentially that goes to the board, we will also be keeping filed on our end um for the boards, and then the links to the docs in the Google Drive and the drive itself will from now on be posted on the uh not on the agenda, excuse me, on the minutes for the meeting to make it that much easier for the board and community members um to access those files. Yeah, um as far as tonight's meeting, especially in regards to, you know, the the these last discussions at the end, I'm gonna try and see if we can um possibly edit the footage that we have to just keep a clip of this, these last, this last agenda item in regards to um the rhinoceros beetle and the fire ants to make it easier to be distributed to people um around, rather than having to send the whole meeting file. Um but yeah, that's that's all I got. And then when you guys are ready, we can do um the oath of office.
Partner, thank you. I I think why don't we go ahead and do the oath of office now before anyone gets cut off? Uh and then we can go into the following announcements. So for those that are not serving on the neighborhood board, um we just went into our new um help me out, partner, our new term. So those that you see here before you were re-elected into their positions, and so we do have to take that oath of office before we continue on. We actually should have did it at the beginning of the meeting, so I apologize. I think we just rushed through a lot of the board stuff that were there. So no, no excuses, just apologies. Um partner, please conduct that oath of office for the members that are here. And then let us know if you need us all to be muted or unmuted.
Uh probably, probably be better if, not better, but probably be easier if you guys were all uh muted. Right now, we can go by honor system on this one. I believe you guys, and also because I can see you on camera anyway. Um so if you guys can just uh repeat after me, I solemnly swear that I will faithfully support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the State of Hawaii, the Charter and laws of the city and county of Honolulu, and the provisions of the neighborhood plan, and will conscientiously and impartially discharge my duties to the best of my ability as a member of the neighborhood board to which I have been elected. Okay.
Aoi, aho mai kaia kako. Mahalenui aoi. Thank you, partner, for that. And i ikabama moa ya hiki ke olalo, ma ko'olalo kamaaina, hiki no. I think what we are striving for is um there is an oath of office that has been drafted in olalo Hawaii, nolela, hiki ke olalo, ma ho pe okia, maumea. Uh we can potentially offer those who wish to recite that ma ko'olalo Hawaii, hiki no. Yeah, and we're super uh proud of the work being done at the NCO to incorporate more of our language, Hawaiian language here in Hawaii for those reasons. So mahalenui. Uh with that being said, uh we're going to continue on, members. We we didn't accommodate the um, we didn't decide on when the next meeting is going to be and what that schedule is going to look like. So partner, I'm gonna yield to you because I never had to deal with that before. Do we just assume the same pattern, the same schedule for next month?
So, yeah, so so because there was no board action on regarding the meeting schedule, the NCO will still implement the standing schedule as it is now, second Monday of every month. Um also, as I had, also for this board um in regards to your active committees, since you guys did not um re-establish your committees, when you guys do, if I remember correctly, our facilities manager already forwarded the existing schedule to the library. So when you guys, next month, when you guys re-establish your committees, then we'll we'll pick up the committees from from that point. But the the library already has your guys tentative meeting schedule for the next fiscal year of twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay. And then I will add that Principal Dela Cruz has offered us to use the uh the either we can use the the cafeteria again at Waianalo Elementary School, um or if we think that we can fit in the library, I would say we figure out a way to get back into Waianalo. Um and so uh something for us to think about as we go through next meeting. Again, for those in in the public who are wishing to serve, and even for the members here present, if you know someone that lives in those designated areas, please reach out and ask that they participate and that they serve if they are able to assist with us in that way. Uh we mahalo all of you for that. Uh next Waianalo, excuse me, broadcast schedule for Olelo is currently uh broadcasted on Olelo Channel forty-nine on the fourth Monday of the month, nine PM, and on the first and third Saturdays of the month at three PM. Video replays can be found at the website listed on the agenda. And I just wanna ask, partner, what would be the best way to get that information either updated from Olelo, or do we just assume it's always gonna be that? Do you know?
Um we can, I can, I can let our office know to reach out, because that's a good thing for all boards. Because also you, also we all deal with, or all the boards deal with, you know, special broadcasts from Olelo, which then bumps um the rebroadcast. Also, in regards to rebroadcasting, along with the Google Drive and other, you know, other system things we're implementing at the NCO, the other thing I forgot to mention earlier was that we are now broadcasting, rebroadcasting all meetings on YouTube.
I could.
We're utilizing, we're utilizing an NCO. We're utilizing, we are utilizing an NCO YouTube and meetings are being posted within five business days of the meeting. So there's no need to, you know, wait for the archive to be posted a month later or any extended amount of time. From now on, minutes and um, and the footage of the meeting should be up and ready for viewing for the board or community members within five to seven days. I just did it, um, I just did it last week for the Manoa Board. Meeting finished on Monday, the minutes and um footage was ready and posted by the end of business on Friday.
Okay.
So, but our general timeline is, is around five days, you know, cause we have, just in case, other boards and stuff. So about five to seven days.
Okay. Maika'i, mahalunuia for that. Um, and then along the same lines, members, as far as announcements, the Waikiki Neighborhood Board, the Kahului Neighborhood Board, the Kaneohe Neighborhood Board and the Kailua Neighborhood Board are going through the same uh convening meetings as us. So when their schedules get agreed on and posted, we will definitely make adjustments on our agenda to reflect that. And we highly encourage the communities to participate in those conversations as well. Um, with that being said, members, we are at adjournment. I do wanna mahalo everyone for your time, patience and service this evening and every evening and every day uh that you work towards the input of community and the um, the thriving that we wanna see within our community. So thank you guys so much for your time. Um, can we ask someone to close us off in Pule this evening? Do we have a volunteer? I see Auntie Mabel trying to unmute. Okay, Auntie Mabel, mahalunuia.
Father in heaven, we come to you through your son, our Lord Jesus Christ, and we just lift up all the business tonight, Lord. And we just thank and praise you for just your presence and helping us with this business, with our community. We ask, Lord, that you continue to bless the leadership. We ask that you bless the, the office, Lord, the partner and all the work that they do for us, Lord. We just give you glory and praise, praise. Bless our officials, bless everybody in the community that's coming together for the good of the whole community, Lord. We give you glory because it's our first meeting and yet it's running so smoothly. So thank you for blessing our chairperson. Thank you, Lord Jesus, so much for his leadership. And we just give you glory and we give you praise and we thank you for the meeting tonight. We ask this through your son, our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Mahala, Auntie Mabel. Members, with no other items before us, we will adjourn at nine fifty-seven PM. Again, we mahalo all of you folks for your time and commitment. Uh, we will post the information in the chat up to the Neighborhood Board page. Um, Moayatu, you had a comment? Sorry?
Call him like, no, I was, no, I, I, I didn't know. I thought I was waving my hand.
Oh, okay. All right, gangi. Ahuho kako, mahalama pono. Until we see you folks again. Mahalo.